...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flin?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Peter.
Thanks for being here. We're going to start with public comment. Any member of the public that's here that'd like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
My name is Dallas Reward. I'm the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. Cultural tourism is skyrocketing in the world. It's 125 percent globally and 98 percent in the U.S. Yesterday, I read an article in the news press about the Sanibel Historic Village had 275 people visit in one day last month. Well, I have to disclose it was Free Admission Day, but still, it's a good day for June. I use TripAdvisor as my resource to go, when I travel, for anything that I want to do in a city. Recently, I was in Sweden and I found an English Tudor estate that was unimaginable to see in Sweden. Yesterday, I pulled up things to do under Benita Springs. I see that the number-one thing to do is fishing charters. I'm not sure how long that's going to last with the waterways, the way they look today, with the algae blooms and red tide. Number 12 is the Wonder Gardens. Number 15 is Riverside Park. Personally, I'd like to see Riverside Park in the newly redeveloped downtown Number One on TripAdvisor as a place to see. I think we can accomplish that. We need to provide more resources, like the Lyles Hotel, the Dixie Moon, the Wonder Gardens, cafes, and restaurants. The Board feels with historic tourism on a rise, a historic village would be a great resource to bring people from all over the world downtown. Let's think about how to get more people down there, spend the dollars locally, and we will get some of the huge investment back that we've put into the redevelopment. As you know, the Historic Preservation Board voted to reallocate the funds that was designated for the Historic Village feasibility study recently to go to the Dixie Moon relocation instead. Last year, the Board formed a subcommittee. Three of our members did research to see if we could find any state or federal grants for the feasibility study. And what they found was the committee could not find grants for the studies, but they could find funding for other things after, if it was proved to be economically important for our downtown. So the Board decided to break the feasibility study down into different levels because we know that the city couldn't afford to provide the funds for that right away, as much as it's going to cost. So we lost a beautiful home recently on Goodwin Street that would have been a great asset to a village, we think. We got great feedback from the photos that Brian Keats took for us here in the room. We're going to change those out next month. We did purchase some easels and some portfolios to store the photos. We need a few more of those items. We requested Antonio to do four more oral projects in 2017. We hope to continue a couple of those next year. I hope everybody's had a chance to view them. If you haven't, please look them up. They are not only educational, some of them are quite comical. I like the one of Ben Nelson and Don Thompson. These funds for these projects come out of the Historic Preservation Project under line item in the budget. We are not asking for an increase, but please consider leaving that amount in the budget for 2018 as well. The last few years, the Historic Preservation Grant Program has taken off. We've designated a few more historic resources. I believe it's because of the Historic Preservation Grant Program. They've come forward because they see the value in having their homes designated as historic property. A few couldn't afford to do the repairs needed, but qualified for funding through the grant program. We are not asking for an increase of funds for 2018, just the same amount as last year. We did provide some grant funds for the Historical Society this fiscal year. If they get the McSwain House open, we know that that will be an asset to bring people downtown. So as you heard, we're not asking for any increases in funds, but please, please provide us with the same amount for 2018. But if you'd like to give us some more money for the feasibility study, we'd really appreciate that because I think that's important for us to get done. The Board would like to thank you for your historic preservation and for your providing the city and the residents of Benita Springs your work. Do you have any questions for me? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Dallas.
Thanks, Ellen.
Okay, other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to the introduction of the fiscal year 2018, 2019 draft budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of how we started preparation of the budget and quickly go into just some outlying items that we wanted to just make sure we brought your attention to. We began the preparation in mind with the eight strategic priorities of council. We did want to remind council that this budget does restore the $1 million disaster reserves funding, as well as the $4.1 million in reserves, but it does leave us with a challenge of no unassigned fund balance. And previously, as of last fiscal year, we had approximately $4.9 million in last year. So we wanted to make sure that council was fully aware and will be going through a history of what we typically could expect to see as unassigned fund balance, which is basically the savings account that we use to build up for future projects. I would like to bring your attention to Roman numeral page 13 and just go over a few things with you all. Under City Manager, for the flexibility of council, this draft budget does include funding of both the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager. Oh.
Page 13 or Roman?
Roman numeral, page number 13.
Oh, up front.
It's behind you.
It's in the City Manager memo. It's in the City Manager memo. The flexibility was built in that to the final decision of council as how they like to move forward with a permanent city manager. Additionally, this budget does propose the City Attorney and Assistant City Attorney and Administrative Assistant. That's also to provide flexibility as you move forward with your decision-making process, whether you choose the outsourcing recommendations or another avenue. We also wanted to bring your attention to Communications. This does include a staff-recommended budget line item of $68,000 for the closed captioning and ADA accessibility. That is because of we have live streaming on TV-98. If we did not have live streaming, you can provide that service on the Internet and it's not required to be live streaming. We do know that many of our adjacent municipalities do have this closed captioning and they have been preparing to put that into the system with the last few years. In 2017, 16, we know that the City of Naples does, as well as Sanibel as well.
Arlene, just to that point, not to interrupt you, but just, I guess selfishly, Benita Bay went through, we used to have Comcast. Comcast used to show the city council meetings. We now have Hotwire, I guess, the entire neighborhood. I know any of these neighborhoods doing some type of a change. But when you look at the chunks of people, the amounts of people that live in these neighborhoods, and I know Laura's, I think, working with Hotwire on this, but you've got a good percentage of Benita Springs that's not being able to see the city council meetings right now, for one reason or another. So I'd ask council to keep that in mind. I don't know what we need to do, but...
Well, I think we, so Worthington had a similar problem, and they solved it.
Yeah.
And I think that's what, part of what, I've talked to Benita Bay about it, and maybe Laura's working on it as well.
I can speak to that because we got Hotwire, I think, one of the first.
Before us.
And we still, and we've been working with Hotwire. They keep telling us that we are going to get it and it's within this, you know, they're talking about months away, but they've said that before. So I don't know if the city could get involved more directly with them because they are bringing a lot of things online that they did when we first got it. But they, but my husband gets, I mean, Jim is a big video person. He doesn't come to anymore because he wants to be close to his coffee. But he, he watches, you know, you can watch it on the computer. So anybody that has a computer can stream there and that's what he does. And currently, that's what we're doing at our house and most people in Pelican Landing are doing that.
Right.
So, but we need to, you know, somebody's mic is picking noises. I don't know who the voice is it is. I took mine off, so it's not...
That's why I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm speaking loud. But it's a concern of ours in Pelican Landing for, we've had it for over a year now and they're still, they always tell us the same thing. So maybe the city could talk to Hotwire. I know our representative was, I've talked directly to the representative and it's not just our local representative, it's the one that's in charge of Hotwire in the area. And they say it's coming, so we'll see.
And it is available online. I haven't had cable in years.
Right.
My wife watches it online.
Right.
So this $68,000 is for the online feed to get closed captioning or everything?
No, that would be for the live. The online is free. There's not, there's not a charge for, to provide it online. And we do know that, for example, the Village of Stera does not have live streaming on, does not have live broadcast on cable. So they do not have this expense. But when you are live broadcasting on the cable access channel, in order to provide the closed captioning, that is where we have the expense. Correct, to be ADA compliant.
So how does that work? I mean, is there somebody here typing everything we say immediately? Or is it, the video's going to somebody, they do it, and then it goes out? So there's more of a delay.
So I'm not, I know Antonio and Laura have the specifics on how it operates. Laura, if you want to come forward.
Well, Laura's walking up there. Is this just for Comcast's $68? Like if Hotwire jumps on or if, you know, someone else jumps on later on, another one? Like I know, I think Benita National has Summit Broadband, Summit out there. Or let's even go with CenturyLink with Prism TV. Are we going to have to pay the $68,000 per carrier or?
Hope not.
Well, that's my question. Is it a one-size-fits-all?
Hi, I'm Laura Taylor. There's two different issues that we're talking about. One is that we have different providers in different gated communities. We are seeing, the first gated community that we noticed that went to a different provider than Comcast was Worthington. That happened a couple of years ago. And they wanted to go with CenturyLink. So it took us about a year and we worked with CenturyLink and now we are streaming on CenturyLink for them. We have also talked to Hotwire. Right now, we're still in talks with them to work things out, but we're moving forward. It just takes a little while. So the closed captioning is the one-time charge, $68,000, to do it for any cable that we're going to be broadcasting on.
So it'll be in our basics?
It'll be in Comcast and CenturyLink. And then if we get onto Hotwire, we'll be working with Hotwire to do the same.
Laura, it's one time or one time a year?
One time.
One time?
Period.
Huh.
And we don't, and if Hotwire comes on, we're not going to have to add more money for that $68?
Not to my knowledge. We're still working with Hotwire to get the details of what it's going to take to come onto their programming.
So to keep in reference, too, we understand that Lee County started the service in 2016, Collier in 2016, City of Naples in April 2018, City of Fort Myers 2017, Marco Island mid-2018, and Cape Coral started providing the service in 2016. So we're looking at a range of folks spending over, Lee County spent over $150,000. To City of Naples spent $65,000, so we're in the mid-range. Marco Island spent $68,000 to provide the service.
Isn't it basically going to be a voice recognition? Like you can talk into your cell phone and it'll print what you're saying as you speak in?
I will let Antonio answer the technical question for you.
We're doing the budget here.
Basically, the service is offered in two ways, automatic mode or live captioning. For the automatic means we make one-time investment on a piece of machinery that will be installed here at City Hall and all the carriers feed off that machine. Whatever we send, they do what's called a pass-through. So they receive caption and then it will be up to the customers, the citizens, to turn it on or turn it off. It's up to them. The second option is called the live caption, which means there's actually going to be somebody designated by us. We actually have to hire that service. Which is a much more expensive option.
Right.
It'll make sense now.
No, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arlene. Sorry to interrupt there.
Moving on for the planning and zoning, there was a question, I think Councilmember Caramba asked about the one, the percentage. We want to make sure that the city collects a 3 percent on impact fees. Part of the contract we have with CH2, which is Jacobs Engineering, is that they, we then administer back to them a 1 percent of that for their costs involved with administering the program. And so with the increase that's looked at, an impact fee of, an increase in the reimbursement back would be 37, but that's based on the overall percentage that we receive back in the 3 percent.
But when, if we have an exceptional year in impact fees and they get that 3 percent because it's supposed to be right, the work that they're done, the 1 percent?
They get 1 percent of the total. So we, we do have to, in that 3 percent requirement is to show the costs involved with it. It's in, the 3 percent is collected as an administrative cost. So we have to allocate the cost involved with administering the processing of the, of the impact fee. But we retain the 2 percent here. And then moving on, the non-departmental, you would see the net, the net decrease of the $5 million from fiscal year 2017, 2018. And this is, and the hurricane expenditures. As we said before, there's a $1 million planned in hurricane expenditures in this fiscal year. And so this is a reflection of how we see the difference in the budget line items for this item. Ann will be going into more specifics of each of the items at this time. I'd also like to thank all of our committees that provided input. We have many advisory committees that met and provided input. Historic Preservation Board, Art and Public Places Board, there's, each of them provided draft budgets to staff, each of the department heads. And then I'd like to thank Ann and her staff as well. And with that, I'm going to let Ann begin with the presentation of the...
Can I make one general comment, which is, remember last year, we took a million and a half out of the first suggested budget in order to true up the budget more, I'm going to say, to reality, closer to the bone of reality. And from looking at this budget, I think that's worked very well because you can now very clearly see the comparisons to actual. And in my view, on the general operating, they're fairly modest. You know, there are a few things we can talk about. But I just want to also compliment Ann and the whole staff for putting that into play. And surely everybody, because it relates to what everybody gave for their suggestions for a budget. So just a thanks on that.
Good morning. I would like to start by thanking the directors for all their assistance with the budget. You may not be aware, but they actually input into our financial system their budget requests. So they're, they're the ones that actually did the keying in of the information and then the descriptions in one of the reports that was in the budget book, the detail that shows the supporting documentation or the detailed line items of what makes up their budget request. So there's a lot of work on the department's side. And then they all met with Arlene to go over their requests and some suggestions for changes occurred at that time as well. So it was a lengthy process that we started it in the April timeframe. So we're finally to this point, so, thank you. Also with this morning, I want to do a PowerPoint presentation. And I did receive some suggestions from some council members of some things that would be helpful to present. So that's been built into this format. So it's a little bit different from what we've done in the past and hopefully it'll be informative and we can move as quickly as you'd like through the process. But you have a handout that has every slide on it. And to begin with, this is just a real brief review of a little bit of history of financial decisions and policies that have been in place that impact this budget request for FY 2019. In 2016, the first bullet deals with the additional revenue from the communication services tax and the electric franchise fee. That was approved in 2016, became effective that year. And in fiscal year 17, it was actually a partial year. FY 18, we had a full year of those additional revenues. Those revenues are recorded in the 2011 Debt Service Fund. And they are accumulating there. They are being used for the portion of the debt service that was previously funded by the General Fund. That 2011 Debt Service Fund was, or Debt Service is paying off debt proceeds that were primarily used for roads. 85 percent of the debt proceeds were used for roads and therefore the Road Impact Fee Fund funds 85 percent of the debt service. And that's the second bullet, just to tie into that Debt Service Fund.
And that's what we colloquially call the Imperial Parkway Debt?
Correct. Yes, that was the big amount.
Ann, may I just ask a question in that regard? We, the reason why we have the breakdown from which fund pays for this is related to the use of the debt. They are restricted funds, so, I mean, you mentioned it's about the road impact fee. But it seems to me, from a policy perspective, it's best to use funds that are restricted to pay off the debt. So are we doing that to the, to the extent possible or?
Yes, we are because...
Okay, we can't do any better than 85 percent or whatever it is?
No, because the, the other 15 percent was the purchase of this building. So it's the general government, so it wasn't anything that restricted revenues.
So then, then we have to go to either General Fund or, well, we earmarked the, the communication thing. But that, that's just like using the General Fund, right? There's no difference between the communicate.
Because those revenues...
It's just a different name, but it's basically, can be, those funds can be used for anything.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the next item, beginning, this was back in FY 15, with that budget process, some of the costs that were previously recorded in the General Fund that relate to transportation were now allocated to the gas tax fund. So they were eligible expenditures that could be funded by that restricted revenue stream. And we have continued that ever since that fiscal year. Financial policy addresses the disaster reserves and the operating reserves. I wanted to review that and how, what the guidance is for calculating the reserve. So disaster reserves by policy was set at $1 million. The operating reserves by policy are set at a level equal to four months of average General Fund operating expenditures for the prior two fiscal years. So this is a calculation was done for the, using the prior two complete fiscal years, which would be FY 17, so we're looking at operating expenses. So this was our total expenditures for FY 17 less hurricane costs that we did incur in FY 17 to get to 2017, operating expenditures of $12,120,000. FY 16, $12,189,000, total $24,000 divided by 24 gives us $1,12,000,000 times four, gets us to the 1.41 million dollars. So that's the calculation. That's a part of the financial policy. Any questions on that?
Well, the only question I have, and I think this relates to another question that I had, which it, it wasn't clear when I was looking through the budget that we could get some historic figures of what actually are operating expenditures because we have, like, one-time events, I would say, and plus we have the emergencies. So it was too complicated. I guess if I spent a lot of time, I could have figured it out. But, but I, but I think this is getting at it. You're saying that basically the most extraordinary event is the hurricane, which makes sense to try to get at what is operating expenditures and then do the, do the formula there, which makes sense. And what does CAFR mean? I forgot.
Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Okay, all right.
It's our audit financial statements.
Okay, the audited, okay.
So just kind of a detail on the debt. Is a slice of operating expenditures that's debt service or no? You just allocate it separately and move it over to the Debt Service Fund?
Should be both. It should be...
That's my question.
This is just General Fund?
Right. I'm going to let it go.
And expenditures. Any funding from the General Fund for debt services?
No, my question is, in the definition of operating expenditures, is any debt service in there? That's my question.
No.
It's not?
It's not.
So she moves it over to the Debt Service Fund?
Because that's a transfer now.
She does a fund transfer into it.
Well, I understand that, but under debt services, I'm going, from my place of business, we have debt services to say whatever the rent is for this building is $400,000. Right. So you have $400,000 that should be in the operating expenses. And we also, I should know this, but I don't. Do we have a debt services equal to what the payment of this building is for policy? Nope? We'll use Benita. We'll use the Fire Department. Station four, the yearly payment is $415,000. By policy, we have to budget 415 for the payment, but by our own internal policy, I believe also, we have to, or the bank required it, for us to have $415,000 in reserves. So if something happens, we need to spend this money. We still have it in the bank to pay them.
Right. And we don't, we don't have that requirement.
Okay.
But that would be something that our operating reserve would provide for it.
So when you say debt services, it's not part of?
Not part of operating.
Right, it's not a reserve.
But, but the money comes out of the General Fund through a fund transfer to the Debt Service Fund that otherwise doesn't have money other than for the impact fee transfers? Okay, just so I understand.
Then another quick question. Of the 4.1 million, theoretically, is that supposed to be used from, let's say, October till January, when we do not receive tax money?
The, the, the policy doesn't specify. It's just, it's dealing with if there's shortfalls in revenues, if there'd be a need where you need to...
So historically, how much do we tap into that?
Historically, we have nothing.
Until this year.
Until this year.
Until this year, for the hurricane.
So Ann, are you going to get to, or should we ask questions about how the X, without the operating, without this operating and General Fund reserve, all right, without the disaster reserve, the General Fund got stripped down to nothing. Are you going to get to that here?
Yes.
All right, well, wait. Thanks.
We're going to show historically what those funds have been throughout the years.
The only reason I say this is, you know, there's stuff out there that people think, oh, we just have a $287,000 gap. We really have a multimillion-dollar gap.
Right, yes.
It's because you moved that reserve to replenish the disaster reserve.
Right, the unassigned fund balance.
So there's a lot of confusion about what the hole is. The hole's massive. It's not $200,000.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Beginning in 2007, you may recall that we had some costs that were being paid for by the General Fund that, based on our legal research, did qualify to be paid for out of the building fee fund. So we started allocating those costs over to the building fee fund and that's continued in this budget as well. And then in December 2013, I mentioned this because it is an agreement that was entered into that affects this budget. It's the Revenue Participation Agreement with Lee County, where they are providing funding towards, to us for, for use for Debt Service Fund. And I do have the next slide shows some history on that. So these are the funding sources for that 2014 debt related to the downtown and for each of the fiscal years. So this is the amount that's coming from the cities, that has come from the city's agalorum taxes. This is the amount of the county participation to the current fiscal year and the amount that has come from other city transfers in from the General Fund and the gas tax. When we get to looking at our projections, we find that by FY '20, according to the projections, we will not need to be making a transfer in out of the other funds. The amount covered by the agalorum and the county participation are projected to be able to cover the debt service.
Right. Now, there's another fact in this, right, which is downtown costs us a heck of a lot more than the $13 million in debt we borrowed. So, you know, we're making a decision at some point to throw that county agalorum on a contractual TIF into this Debt Service Fund. But I wouldn't read into that, that, well, all right, when that gets done, we don't have a massive amount of money that we still otherwise spent on downtown. That, that, that agreement with the county was to cover the entire thing, not just the debt. Or even if it was the debt, the reality is the whole pie is... Or even if it was the debt, the reality is, the whole pie is like this, the debt is only thirteen million dollars on it. So it's once again just, I'm not saying an improper choice, but just a choice that's been made to put this money and kind of, quote, dedicated to debt service.
Right.
Costs is ten or more million dollars more than that.
And I just have another point to make, is that the city ad valorem and the gas and General Funds are basically the same thing, because ad valorem taxes go into the General Fund, right? So even if this one column that you have transfers from General and Gas, is that all gas tax that's in there right now, that one column, the third column over, or is that-
No, it's fifty-seven percent General Fund.
Okay, so, and then the question remains the same, even as the, the amount that has to go in there, are you saying it's preferable to take that payment out of the General Fund, or should we still continue to try to get it out of the gas tax?
Both of these amounts by our participation agreement are, of the revenues restricted to be used for the project.
The project.
Right.
Project, but does it say we have to use ad valorem for that, or could we, as long as we pay that one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, they don't care where we get it from, does it?
It's, it's an allocation of our ad valorem.
Right.
According to the agreement.
Once we get to a point where-
Are you asking Amy if they could use more gas tax funds?
Yeah, that's the big question.
Instead of using the ad valorem?
You said that eventually we, we don't have to use the, the, the-
General and gas.
The General and Gas, that's what, you know, the third column. You made a comment that by 2020, we don't have to do that, all right? All right, that, I, I think it's because the ad valorem for the whole project has reached a point where it covers the debt service. My question is, we can just use gas tax even as, we could use less General Fund and more gas tax even as the debt goes up? I mean, the return goes up, right?
We, we, we need to look at the nature of the cost right now. We have an allocation because of the types of costs that were incurred for the downtown project and whether they qualify for the gas tax.
All right, so it doesn't preclude us using gas tax even if we don't need it to call, to cover the debt service?
That's correct.
Okay, that would, because I-
So why don't we do that to the max?
We should do it to the max, right?
Because it's restricted money, to the max allowed.
Let, let, well, let's take a look at the participation agreement to see, just to get clarify, clarity on that.
Well, I think you're going to need to look at everything, but I mean, why, why isn't our goal to use the restricted, as much restricted revenue as possible?
Right.
I mean, if we're not allowed to do it under some agreement, that's another matter. Can we agree on that?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah.
If we can use gas tax or whatever kind of fund, whatever.
As long as the correct match is there, use the most restrictive first.
Right.
It seems to me as long as you're paying your part of it, you know?
Yeah, it shouldn't matter where it comes from.
Because again, money is fundable, so I'm sure they, what do they do, transfer seven hundred, how do they pay it basically? They give us a transfer of seven hundred and-
Right, once the final values are-
So it goes into some kind of fund and, and if our, if our, if our pocket covers the rest, nobody should care, really.
Right.
All right, thank you.
That's great point, Amy, thank you.
Hey, the General Fund. This is, starts with the pie chart, and on the next slide, and I do have it so you can see it in your handout, but the big chunk of the General Fund requested expenditure budget goes to general government. And on the next slide, go ahead, show that, shows the breakdown of what departments are considered general government. We're required to follow the state chart of accounts and how we categorize our expenditures, and so that drives what types of expenses fall into each one of these functional categories. Public safety, we have been receiving some questions regarding that, because I guess when you think of public safety, you think of Lee County Sheriff, the contract. But it also includes Neighborhood Services. And this, again, is just the General Fund. When we look at the total city, we have the building fee fund, and that's considered public safety as well. So the functions of these departments are considered public safety, and that's how we get to that piece of the pie, which represents sixteen percent of our General Fund expenditure budget. Physical Environment, these departments have parts of that. Transportation, and again, there's some committees that fall into these different categories, and Public Works is the large portion of the transportation. Total piece of pie, fifteen percent. Economic Environment has to do with allocations in the City Council Department. Human Services is the animal control, cultural recreation, and then breaking out the hurricane for separate.
We also wanted to include your attention to the contingency costs of nine hundred thousand dollars. That is for the potential of legal fees that we might incur during, during existing cases, and we've talked with the city attorney as well as special counsel David Theriak. It's specifically related to BG Mine and three separate legal cases moving forward, Raptor Bay and Angler's Paradise. And we have more specifics on that, if you'd like to get with us individually on what those costs might be incurred.
But right now, we think it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood.
Well, we, we don't know it's going to depend on decisions that are made throughout the process.
But worst-case scenario?
That's a, that's a mid-
Best worst case.
That, that's worst case, that, that's basically mid-range of the total.
Okay.
We didn't want, we didn't feel as, there, we'd have to come back to you if it was absolute worst case. There's a lot of discussion that has to happen at that point.
The rea, I questioned that, because I didn't, it wasn't there before, you know? But my concern was, is that it also, in the description, said that that was under the purview of the council where they could allocate expenditures to be paid out of that. So I didn't want it to be like a slush fund for the council, I'm sorry. To be perfectly honest with you, that was my immediate reaction to that. So as long as we understand that it has, it's kind of a, it's intended to be used for a different purpose, and it's not just free cash that we could just do our pet projects in.
Could we title it Legal Contingency Fund, or specifically?
If you'd like to restrict it, we could call it Legal Contingency.
I don't think you have to restrict it, I think we understand it.
Just an understanding, I wanted to clarify, because in your description, in the description in the budget, it said this other wording that bothered me, so that's why I brought it up.
If I can clarify that, we, previously, we had a contingency account here, and in the past, it always required council's approval before anything was spent from the contingency. And that's why that wording was in there.
When did we have a contingency?
We had a bunch of, we had a bunch of them.
We did?
Yeah.
Prior, prior to, I think this, the first budget that, that this council had was the first budget that didn't have one.
And how much, I mean, it was for a similar proj?
It was, it wasn't quite as, as large as the-
No, it was not quite as large, and it was, as projects came up through, throughout the year, if the priority changed or an item came forward, we would, staff would present what that item was, and then council would decide whether they wanted to utilize that funds, or if someone, an issue in the public came forward, which a need had to be addressed that wasn't budgeted for.
But of course, for those kinds of things, if you have an unassigned General Fund budget-
Correct.
You could just hit that fund and you reduce it. I mean, that's the more logical and direct way.
That's the decision we made last year.
Like what we did, yeah, I mean, but the problem here is that we don't have it, and this is probably not that flexible, and we need to reserve that for, for the purpose in mind.
It would be beneficial to keep this in mind, and so that we, we don't overextend ourselves.
So we have to work on the unassigned General Fund budget, budget part, align item there. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to cover the General Fund in macro now, or how do you want to do this? Just in terms of today? I mean, while we're at it, or? Arlene, do you, or, or you want to just go through the presentation and then see what we want to talk about?
If we could continue, Anne, because Anne's going to go through a couple more specifics, and then if you, then if you'd like, we could go into a macro level discussion if I had one.
This is the chart that shows the breakout, it's a, by the bar chart, what I called normal General Fund operating costs. And then you can see in FY17, FY18, FY19, where we have some other items that are what I consider above normal operating costs. And that's where the contingency is added, and then the hurricane expense for FY19. And then on the next slide, it shows the actual dollar amount for, for each of those items that were broken out. And this is showing-
But your 13074 includes that nine hundred thousand dollars contingent, no?
And it's broken out.
It's broken out. Okay. Oh, go ahead, I-
Just moving on to revenues, and this is General Fund, and this makes it clear the large chunk of, of revenue coming into the General Fund is forty-five percent from the, or ad valorem taxes. Next bar just from half-cent sales tax, and then the franchise fees at fourteen percent, and all other revenue making up eighteen percent. And regarding our revenue assumptions, of course, our ad valorem is driven by our taxable property value, and we did experience a five point four three percent increase for tax year 2018, although that was down from eight point nine three percent in the prior year. So, and this budget request is using the 2017 mileage, point eight one seven three, not sure how that two got there. So, but point eight one seven three. The other General Fund revenues really are showing minimal growth in this request, and using the 2018 rates for communication services tax and electric franchise fees.
So, so those two fees are not in, that are in the Debt Service Fund, they're not in this presentation for electric and communications?
Well, there's, there's a portion of the fees that are in the General Fund.
Right, just the parts in the General Fund. So the part that is going to Debt Service is not included in this?
Right, for, to, to break the piece of pie.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, if you go back one, that seventeen nine, seventeen point nine, a portion of that tax is not in that font, in that number.
And all of the Debt Service is not in it?
Right.
Three million six.
Right.
This next slide does show the history of ad valorem tax, taxable value increases. Again, we are seeing a little bit of a trend with some decrease in our values. New construction now with, shows an increase. And then General Fund expenditure assumption, assumptions. Our budget was focused on efficiencies, so wherever we could reduce costs, that's how the budget was prepared. There was one reduction in staff position in the Neighborhood Services Department. We did continue funding a vehicle replacement and repair account to address the city's aging fleet. And then we did have some additional costs related to drainage maintenance and landscape maintenance, and you can see our FY2019 request, our FY2018 budget, so an increase of sixty-nine thousand in the drainage maintenance expenditure line item, and then landscape maintenance increase, one hundred and forty-six thousand, three nineteen.
And this does not include Parks Department? The landscape or maintenance?
Yeah, this is, this is from the Public Works.
Public Works only, not Parks.
Right.
For the vehicle replacement, we'll be bringing forward the idea of a concept as we go forward, is, it's repair and replacement, and we're going to be asking whatever is not spent in the fiscal year that you allow to roll over, and we're looking at a policy of trying to fund that each year at a hundred thousand until we can complete the turnover of the poor-conditioned vehicles to mid fare, so we can get a better handle of where we are. So each year, replacing approximately two to three vehicles.
Do we have a rough idea what the landscape, called landscape grounds, maintenance in the Parks Department is? It's chopped up into all those various little parks, so you can't really-
We can get that for you.
Yeah. It, it, I remember adding it up last year, it's a lot, it's real money. I mean, you expect it to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hurricane Irma, budgeted in FY19 at a million dollars. As we already mentioned, the contingency account, nine hundred thousand. Closed captioning at sixty-five thousand. Vehicle repair and replacement, a hundred thousand, and an increase in the professional services budget within the city attorney department, two hundred thousand, which is in line with what we're looking at in the current fiscal year for those outside specialized services.
Specialized services, that is not the outsourcing.
No, I was going back to the ADA, because in Roman numeral thirteen, you had sixty-eight, now it's sixty-five.
Yeah.
It should be sixty-eight. It should be sixty-eight.
Rush?
Brad, you weren't typing these numbers up, were you?
No. Yeah, sorry about that. Next, I just wanted to briefly touch on our outstanding debt, and, so we have two loans, one from 2011.
I'm sorry, Anne, I was off on something else, real quick. If you can go back one, the increase of two hundred thousand professional services for the city attorney, there's an increase?
We, we had budgeted last year a hundred thousand, we've exceeded that and had to do budget transfers in that.
Now is that for because of outside counsel, or for other, okay?
The outside counsel, specialized counsel.
All right. And that's not going to get, I mean, I'm just wondering why the nine hundred and, and the two hundred, why aren't they addressed in the same line item?
It wasn't, it was, it's not services related to the litigation.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we specifically broke out the nine hundred based on the existing cases that the council.
Are you saying that's what covered, like, easement attorneys, I mean, not easement, but eminent domain attorneys, things like that? This one's not going to carry out.
Of course, Gabriel Theria, correct. Gabriel, Audrey, you can.
All ready, Bob?
Too tall. If I may, it would be items like, for example, we have an election coming, and I hired an election attorney to assist in ordinance, to make sure everything-
Over and above what the litigation would be at the nine hundred?
Correct, specialized counsel that I would normally use for making sure I did the work correctly, or, you know, as oversight attorneys, or have them actually do more, determine the situation.
Walter, isn't it also for community development?
Community development has, we're doing cost recovery, and that's right now one of the things that are on the, on your agenda for July 18th, as the administration, and we're, we did pay some community development, but that is intended for when there's an actual application. Now, if it's something, for example, drafting ordinances that would come out of the specialized counsel, I would use normally.
So like, I just was looking at the zoning for Terry Assemblage, and David was there. Who pays for that?
Theoretically, the applicants, I think that application came in beforehand, so I don't know if they dated or not. The zoning board deciding that they want to have a workshop, that would come out of my budget, or out of the city attorney budget.
Okay, so this is, okay, I get it, thank you.
Tarian?
So our two outstanding loans, the 2011 bank loan, had a regional issue amount of thirty-six million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, and it has an interest rate of two point two-one percent. And proceeds were used eighty-five percent on roads, and as mentioned before, being paid out of, eighty-five percent of the debt service being paid out of the Road Impact Fee Fund. Excuse me. The second debt that we have is the downtown debt, thirteen million, interest rate of two point nine six percent, maturing date February 1, 2029. Did just verify with our financial advisors whether there would be any opportunities for refinancing, did not think that there would be, but I just wanted to check, and these are worthy responses, and, and basically, there, there's no opportunity at this point. If we were to refinance the 2011 note, we probably would be looking at a higher interest rate, so this is a very good rate. And we looked at this before, 2014, just the way it's structured, there's a make the bank hold on a prepayment, so it's really not feasible to, to prepay that, and that's, that's still, you know, still-
I'm not sugge, I'm not suggesting we refinance, but- I'm not suggesting we refinance, but you could refinance the one without the make whole, which is the Imperial Parkway debt and throw it out into the future and reduce our current yearly payments.
Correct. That's, that's possible.
So, is your, so what's the term of the 2.8, 10 years or 20, what is that?
The remaining?
No, no. In other words, you're saying if we went out right now, we'd have to pay 2.8%, right? As opposed to 2.21, right?
Right.
And so, I'm asking for what maturity?
I, I don't have that with me. This is information taken from a financial advisor, but I could find that out.
Because, well, because obviously if you went out longer, you'd normally expect to pay a higher rate. I'm not saying rates haven't gone up, but, you know, if that's a 10 or a 20-year rate, that might not be that bad. I'm not saying we should do it, but it might not be that bad as opposed to a short-term rate.
What do you mean by make whole? Just the difference in interest? Like, for example, if you redid it at a lower interest rate than the difference they would have to pay for?
Because they were, they're losing interest and they lock into that lower interest rate.
No. Is the penalty so large it's not worth doing?
I know, but, you know, following your thing is that if they went to 2.9% and maybe that's what you could get for extending the loan, you wouldn't have to make whole anything, right? Because it's, it's just a payment of the lost interest.
Right.
So, you refinance them at 2.9%, but instead of doing it at 2029, you did it at, you know, 2035. That's what I'm asking you, what, what they, that's an interest make whole provision, correct?
Yes. And our financial advisor basically indicated that it would be un economical to refinance because the amount that you would have to pay.
She said that two years ago, right?
We better understand that in some detail.
Just, just get a more detailed thinker. I think from what, you know, extracting from 30 years or something, that that means make whole on any loss of interest payment. So, it's possible you could do what Peter said by extending the loan, even if you had the same, if you had a same or higher rate. And you wouldn't have to pay any interest payment, I don't believe, but I don't know what the contract says. So, I would, I like to, not that I want to do that, but we should know what the information is.
Yeah, because I think when Julie came, she was talking about if we wanted to combine everything into one bank loan, then we'd have to make them whole because it may not be with that bank also.
Well, that's the requirement of that, of that financing.
Yeah.
Which is the downtown.
Right.
And then this is what's outstanding on both of the loans.
There you go.
2011 debt had final maturity in early FY 2022. It's that last payment is due November 1, 2021.
So, it's $3,600,000 a year right now. It's a lot of dough. When you consider our operating expenditures.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said 3,600,000. We've had this discussion last year, but I'm just reiterating my point, which is 3,600,000 out of an operating, an operating budget of ballpark, what do we, what did we say, 12, 15 million, something like that?
14, 19.
Yeah, that's a big number.
Right.
It's a big number.
But I think the number 2023 is also worth noting because, you know, this relief, I mean, we have to, I hope we're having a discussion about the un.
Just when you leave, it gets easy.
Good. It's me, I'm the problem. Okay. No, but I think that's an important date, really.
And then summary of the history.
Call it the Columbus dividend.
Exactly. Because I'm such a sprinter.
The history of our unassigned fund balance going back to fiscal year 2011. This is what our fund balance, unassigned portion of fund balance has been running. Did have a dip in FY 2015.
Wonder Gardens.
When there was that.
So, you just had a.
Because we, when we actually made the loan to the Wonder Gardens, because it was $3 million of the non-spendable, that fund balance became unspent.
So, pro forma, that's 6, 7.
6, 7, really. You just changed the S instead of a liquid S, you made it a fixed S.
Yep.
So, so really, $5 million is something that we're going into FY 19 without. That's really the slides that were, the information that was requested, I did put in just to grab, just to see some trends on impact fees. That's our road impact fee history. And then.
Your five-year table has it going way down though, huh? What, you handed out today?
Yeah, yeah.
You have it going down to what?
Pretty low.
200, what? It was how much money?
It was going pretty low.
I mean, less than a million, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
220, what do they read, 227?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be going over that now.
Well, all right, sorry. I just think.
And then we just, we, impact fees, now the, the region on the community are not broken out anymore, so we're just having the park fees.
250.
Next slide deals with some unknowns. Amendment one, which is an additional homestead exemption, be on the ballot this fall. It will provide an additional $25,000 exemption for homestead properties that have basically taxable values above $100,000. And the most is $25,000, so it's dollar for dollar for any taxable value above $100,000. Property appraiser's office did provide an estimate fiscal impact based on our 2017 taxable value and that potential reduction in our ad valorem revenue using that value is $217,800. $800.
Not bad.
No, it's, it's not, but it's.
That's based on current mileage.
That's based on the current mileage at 2017 final values. And if for when, there would be an economic correction, that's an unknown. Results of our stormwater utility study and potential projects that could be funded through a potential new dedicated revenue stream, that's an unknown. And natural disasters. Did add this slide again because there was discussion at the last workshop about, about the potential revenue enhancement options, just so that you have the information before you, if you later decide to have some discussion on that. And our mileage. At our current.
24.
So, it's at our current mileage or 2017 mileage, additional $406,000 of revenue for the general fund. I do want to mention another handout that you have that was right under the PowerPoint. And this provides you with the supporting documentation for the details relating to category on page six of the budget book, breaking down by general government, public safety. So, that shows for each fund how much, where, where those dollars are coming from. What I showed on the slide was just the general fund, but this shows the total of all city funds. That was just for your information. We are ready to go into the five-year plan. Before we start that, though, I do want to just mention something because it's something I've thought about, want to make sure that it's clarified a little bit. Because at the last workshop, I was asked about cash flow and our cash flow is, is hanging in there. We monitor it very closely, monitor it to where we were last year at this time. And oddly enough, our total cash is at about the same level as last year at this time. It's just the composition, the, the road impact fee fund has more cash in it and our general fund has less. So, from a cash flow and the resolution that council previously approved that, that would allow us to have some inter-fund borrowings, we're okay there. But I want to mention to you, inter-fund borrowings doesn't give us budgetary authority. So, when you think about spending, where you need to, we first need to have a budget in order to spend, the only thing right now that we have to create budgetary authority are our reserve accounts. Because the fact that we have no unassigned fund balance. In those prior years when we had unassigned fund balance and we said, here, this is something, just as, as you said earlier, this is something that wasn't in the budget and, but, but there's a decision to move forward with spending it, it could be for whatever, professional services. And we had that this year with the affordable housing and the stormwater. And they were council priorities and it makes sense to move forward with those types of expenditures. But in order to, to have an expenditure, we need to have budgetary authority to spend, which means the budgetary authority is that we have a funding source for it. So, right now, we don't have that unassigned fund balance to give us that, the budgetary authority that has a funding source.
Which is a huge deal.
Right. And, and so, it's not a matter of cash flow. Yes, there's cash that could be borrowed, but if we don't have budgetary authority in the general fund, then we can't move forward with that expenditure.
Now, what if you had a capital project that had money allocated to it, but you perceived it wasn't going to be spent or you thought as a priority matter, it might not be spent halfway through the year? Is there any way to get that money back through the general fund and available for whatever would come up interstitially?
If it was funded as a general fund item in the capital improvement project.
If it was, right.
That category.
Which a lot of them are.
Yes.
I think that relates to my question because what I keep thinking about is these projects where we're applying for grants or, or help, we have to have some kind of a match.
Correct.
Does that match come out of the special fund or does it come out of the general fund or both? It just depends on the project?
It depends on the project and where we can allocate the funds for it. If it, if it qualifies for a more restrictive fund as far as impact fees or gas tax, we would utilize that first. But if the grant requirement required, depending on what the requirement is and what the project is.
And we earmark like a general fund portion of that so that we could be more attractive to the grant, to, to obtain the grant. So, conceivably, just as Peter just said, if there was a grant or a project that we're working on that looks like it's going to be delayed for a variety of reasons, there is some extra general fund, funds that we could switch back over to the general fund. And that's what we, we would have to do. And alternatively, if we don't have any unassigned general fund balance and a project comes up and it's really exceptional, we could do what Anne said was borrow from some of these other funds that are not being expended. Or we could go out to the outside and make a loan to execute. So, we're talking about any extra projects now become a, a debt problem, you know, because we don't get that, those funds for free. We have to pay for them and an interest payment.
And that's what's interesting and I'm glad you brought that up because if we, if we borrow outside debt, outside debt is a funding source. It comes in as an other financing source and it does give us budgetary authority. So, when we borrow money, let's say to acquire a piece of property or for whatever reason, we actually do have that funding source coming in for, to create budgetary authority so that we can have, we have a type of revenue coming in saying other financing source and then we can create a budget to do the property acquisition.
But doesn't that work if we borrow from the gas tax? That doesn't?
No, she, that's what she's saying.
It's internal. So, it's only if we do it outside.
Outside. And that's why I did, you know, we were seeing what, when we weren't sure about cash flow with the hurricanes, what, what if we need a short-term loan? So, we were looking into that for that purpose to, to make sure that we had budgetary authority to, to pay for these expenditures.
You know, I think, not among council, but in the public eyes can glaze over among funds and all this kind of stuff. But the bottom line is everything we're hearing here is, is a significant issue.
Right.
All right? We're talking about zero unassigned funds and the ramifications of it in the general fund.
Yes and no.
You happy with, we're happy with no money in the general fund?
Well, let's go back to the mayor.
Right.
When the mayor ran on his platform as a zero-based budget, to me, as zero-based budgets, everybody starts at zero. We were lucky enough to have $4.9 million to, to withstand what happened with Irma. But if that's the case, and again, I'm only going back to what I know at another life.
Right.
Is that you start at zero, like our unassigned fund balance.
Right.
The VSFD is $800,000. It goes in and now it's reassigned to projects that we have for the next year. We don't, there's not a, a magic bank account sitting up here with $800,000. And then we started with, you know, a new thing. That's where I've got a little glazed over look right now.
Well, I'm not saying you do.
I'm only thinking myself. I'm thinking to myself, okay, okay, yeah, 4.9 is disturbing, but it was great that we had it. Now, do we want to replace it? And that's the question. If we go to replace it, which is fine, but it's got to be replaced somehow.
Right. So, we operate much different than the fire department, right? So, the fire department has a minimal debt. It basically does pay as you go. You have a lot more allocation to capital projects versus us. So, for example, that $5 million that was unallocated in the budget, i.e., it wasn't in a specific capital budget item, was designated for the quadrant plan. So, you know, we operate a little, it's not right or wrong, we operate a little differently here. So, it's just not like that was just free money hanging around. And, you know, it was part of the money that when we went to the NPO and we got our, whatever.
Do you still have that $5 million?
No, it's gone. It's gone.
There's no money in the quadrant.
That money I'm talking about is gone. In other words, we do have money for the quadrant plan, but the money that, which has been in there before, and she's got some new money this year, but the last year, if you looked at last year's budget at a glance, that had the unassigned fund number, the number she's talking about is now zero, it was designated for the quadrant plan. So, it wasn't allocated through a budget process. We didn't put it in, we could have put it in the current year.
In the lineup.
We could have put it in the lineup. We didn't do that.
Right.
So, what I'm, all I'm getting at is, I think it's a little bit apples and oranges. The fire department operates much more pay-as-you-go the way I've seen it.
Yeah.
Right? And so, I wouldn't say just because you have next to nothing there, it's okay to have next to nothing there. It depends on everything else you're doing.
I guess my, I guess just a different, difference in philosophy.
Right.
Unassigned fund balance goes to, back to the general fund to help offset everything, not as a side note, unassigned fund balance. It's used to either lower taxes or to do X.
That's not the way we handle it, but.
I know, I'm just saying, that's where I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Oh, okay. That's fair. That's fair. Yeah, yeah.
And I'd just like to make a comment in regard to zero-based budget because I don't think we fully understand what that means. If you really want to do zero-based budget, then you take every function, like you take public works and it does ABC, it does 100 different things, all right? And every functionality starts at zero and says, you do that, putting asphalt out on your streets with zero money, tell me how much it's going to cost to do it.
Well, I think that's what they do every year.
That's what, that, well, they may or may not because it's really hard to do. So, when we, that's really what zero, it doesn't mean there's no taxes. It doesn't mean you're never going to increase your expenditures, but it says you challenge every functionality and say, do it with zero and tell me, build a budget as if you were starting out from scratch to, to do that functionality. So, that's really the way we need to approach it. And that's why we're asking questions like, what are the operating expenditures? Let's get a handle on it. Let's really look at each one of those functionalities, not down to the, each task they do, but each functionality, like give us a website. You know, we should ask Laura, how much does it cost to do a website as if we started right from scratch? And she says, I'm going to build my budget. I think she's done that. But that's how you do it. It's an unbelievable amount of work, but it's, but a lot of. It's an unbelievable amount of work, but it's, but a lot of people off the new budget by looking at previous expenditures, and you say, there's a certain inflation rate because of personnel costs increasing, and let's just notch it up. You hardly ever go back and say, let's start at zero, but that's what it's all about.
And, you know, with government light flying around, we've had these conversations, right? If you just look at, okay, we have 500,000 from last year, we're going to, you know, cost of increase, cost of living increase of 8%, that's not, that's not government light, that's not, that's just bureaucracy rolling over and increasing with the cost of living adjustment.
Or doing wrong.
But if you really go back to zero, like you're saying, Amy, and look at, okay, what do we need to do to ask for that $500,000, or justify asking for that $500,000, it's an entirely different approach.
And even personnel costs is the same thing. You know, you're doing something, ask Matt, how much is it, how many people does it take to do whatever you do? Can you do it a different way? Is that, is that the best we can do in regard to numbers? That's how you do zero, I mean, I don't suggest you do this every year, but every once in a while, the department should be asked to do just that. That's, if that's the philosophy of budgeting that we want to encourage, because it's hard to do that every, it takes too much time.
Can we take a shot at focusing on a few topics, like the huge one, which is the hurricane?
Okay.
And go through that, is that all right? So, because I remember a few months ago Fred was saying, geez, I think we're really going to get hit by this hurricane, and then we seemed to, I mean, not hit by the hurricane, who knew we got hit by the hurricane? He was saying, I think we're going to hit financially and such, and, and, at least for myself, I was saying, well, let's wait and see. And, you know, I thought, a month ago, gee, it isn't that much, but it's pretty obvious to me that Fred was right now, that we understand these numbers. I just want to go through this, because there's a lot that's been coming at us from different angles, and it's all great work, but a lot of different stuff, so, in summary, I, from the way I understand it, the hurricane, if you look at page 75, and there's various places we could look, but this is one place to look. We could look at different slides, we could look at the front of the book, the back of the book, the side of the book, but it's one place, right? On page 75, right in the middle, it says Hurricane Irma, and those numbers, so it was last year's budget, it was this year's budget, and it's next year's budget, they basically add up to ballpark $9 million, is that right, Ann? Not to the nickel. So it's $9 million hit, all right? And then if you go back and you look at page 6, if you don't mind, Arabic 6, so this is on the back of the Budget at a Glance, right, then page after it, page 5 is Budget at a Glance, so you see, project unassigned fund balance, actually, on page 5 for a second, if you look at the first column, right, which is project unassigned fund balance, that's where the $4,009,000 was last year, or $5 million, whatever it is, all right?
What page are you on?
I'm on page 5, what do they say?
Regular.
Arabic.
Regular.
Regular.
Said Arabic.
Arabic is regular, sorry.
The Budget at a Glance.
I'm getting it. On 7, all right. Okay.
All right. So page 5, so the first two columns, take the second one, operating and disaster reserves, the 4, 8, all right? The $200,000 that we've heard about and has been written about is just that, it's the shortfall of the 4, 8, as how you, very well explained how you come up with the requirement for that, all right? But the other thing that's zero is right before it, project unassigned fund balance, that is zero, and that was ballpark $5 million last year, right? And then if you turn on page, the next page, 6, so this is just more detail off of 5, in effect, and that top line, where it says general fund, $4,008,000, so that's, that's the sum of those two, it's the operating and disaster reserves, and the unassigned, which is zero. Last year, when we were presented last year, is the same book in front of us, was basically $10,001,000. So this is like a huge deal, as I've said before. Now, and if you go back to page 5, where it said project unassigned fund balance, you see that footnote 1 below, that said beach road, that's the quadrant plan, and this is not just about the quadrant plan, I mean, we, we're down to the bare bones here in a whole bunch of stuff, right? You know, Logan Boulevard, you know, this is essential stuff we're having, she's got in our capital plan, Logan Boulevard and transportation, all right? That footnote 1 used to say something like $5 million. So that's all to the point that, so what's, one of the things that's missing, then, all right, so, of the $9 million, I think we've heard $6 million is possible reimbursement from FEMA, is that right? It's a ballpark, not to the penny.
Correct.
All right, so $6 million, and we haven't received any FEMA payment yet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's $6 million, back to Fred's point, I don't know if Fred's right about what, 200, Spaceship 2001, 2100, but it's obvious that money is not coming what we thought previously. Are you having similar thing at the fire department?
Yeah, no, it's the same thing, and as far as I was told, it's not even, the whole fund FEMA cash package hasn't even been allocated to the state yet.
Not to the state.
What happens is FEMA pays the state, state's going to keep it at least one or two interest cycles before they give it to the cities, because they're going to make their money.
Like two quarters? Are you talking about two quarters?
You watch and see.
Not, not two years.
Well, whatever their interest quarters are, if they go by quarters, you watch and see, they'll get their money.
So Fred may be more.
It's not going to be a pass.
You're so cynical.
So Fred.
I get it, I get it, I'm kidding.
Well, I'm just saying, they're going to get it, and right now, my understanding is, we've submitted our stuff to FEMA.
Right.
Then FEMA's reviewing it, and then we have now submit this stuff to the state, and the state's going to review it to make sure that FEMA cross their t's and dot their i's before they release, to the state, and then the state's going to review it again, and then send it to us. So I know with Matthew and Fay and all that, it was a two-year project. Now, it was more.
In the fire district, when you've put money out for emergencies and FEMA reimbursement, did they pay you a lump sum, or did they do like they did to Lee County and put you on?
No, it pays, our money's not that much, for us, for the hurricane is $150,000.
Oh.
It's what we got. So, and that's what it was for Fay and all those, it's just for.
Small change.
Yeah, small.
And it's a small part of the budget, too, because ours is a pretty substantial, $6 million.
Yeah, we had, I mean, our debris was.
Right.
See, that, well, that's what, the one thing that still concerns me is that, maybe, obviously, the amount of money that Lee County puts out is a lot more than we do, do for Charlie, but they were, like I said, they got their last payment for Charlie about two weeks after FEMA arrived from Irma.
And Charlie was '05?
'04.
'04.
Now, that doesn't mean it worked to be on that, but, but, think of the big hurricanes that have happened all around.
Right.
Trinidad.
Puerto Rico.
Sandy got paid five years later.
Is that right?
Yeah, in New Jersey, anyway, that's what I.
There was nothing else passing, like, you gotta remember, we had what Matthew and.
And then there were all kinds of disasters all over the country that were related to hurricane, you know, the fires and everything, that all has to, that's all went into one year for FEMA.
And I know Ann's trying the best with the proverbial woman quote-unquote, right, whoever she is. She, she's still there, right? But she's not quite saying what she used to be saying.
Right.
So, I mean, I think we've got to face this reality. I'm not suggesting that we raise ad valorem taxes, but I think that we've got to figure out some prudent way to be plugging this hole, I mean, other than just sitting back and saying bleed, bleed cash, you know, and, which we've done. And the other thing I would say is, taking the whole picture into account, you know, we've got this huge, so Logan, I mean, I guess you're going to talk about capital projects, but it relates to where we are. In other words, it's a big number, all right? And a part of that big number does relate to possible mitigation money. And, you know, we're not sure of that, I mean, Marlene and Matt have worked to put us in a great position for that. Then the other thing I would say about Logan is, you know, we're kind, and this is not the first time it's been done, so I'm not trying to be pejorative, but we're kind of printing money on that, because a chunk of it is, we're giving out impact fee credits for. So, you know, we're, we're very tight to the bone here on this thing.
And if we got hit by another emergency, either this year or next year, there really be.
Right.
Unless that FEMA money shows up, you know, lump sum.
Which, that's no way to plan.
We, we did prepare in the capital improvements project for the H M G P grants, which is the first phase, but we're aware that the community development block grant disaster recovery funds will be coming, and one of the things we're going to be, I'm going to be briefly reviewing on Wednesday, is discussion of some preliminary design work we can have an engineer work on to put those projects together. That would be for the low to moderate income neighborhoods, Dean, Imperial, Quinn, repetitive loss properties, so we want to bring back to start formulating some of those project ideas. So there could be some matches involved in our 2019, the next fiscal year, not this fiscal year, next fiscal year, to be planning for as capital improvement projects as well.
But we have to provide for the, I'm concerned about not having money for the matches, you know, we have to show that, because I don't think we should delay applying for the grants, even if they're not going to come in 2019.
So, so we planned in this fiscal year for the ones that we're eligible to apply for now, as those program requirements come forward, we'll know the, the dates of applying as well.
But that, doing that does not provide for the flexibility that we had before, when we had the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. It's tough.
I just wanted to cover that, so. Where are we supposed to be?
Want to take a look at your handout for the five-year financial plans. This is a five-year projection, so it's based on assumptions, and the starting point is basically where we think we're going to end FY '18, and where we propose the budget for FY '19, and then build on that going out to the five, year two through five, with the proposed budget representing year one of the projection. So it goes through each fund, the first one on page one is the general fund, and then down at the bottom, where you'll see projected unassigned fund balance, and then that comes up to the next year, so as we've already mentioned, we have no unassigned fund balance to bring into FY '19, but by the end of FY '19, based on the budget that is presented, there will be projected unassigned fund balance of 788,000, so, I'm sorry, 758,000.
Okay.
So that will, that then comes into year two, a couple rows up, where you see prior year's unassigned fund balance. Just want you to see how it's, that fund balance that we end of year projected comes into the next fiscal year. The percentage changes, starting at the top, ad valorem, and you can see they're, they're conservative, but the ad valorem is, is dropped to 2% for fiscal year 2020, for the, assuming that the amendment one passes. So we'll see that drop in revenue due to the additional exemptions of about $200,000. And then the, the future years then, I am using 5% for each of those years, just looking at the history of, of the increases in values. Then the other thing that's built into this is, on the five-year capital improvements plan, which will be going over later, it does build in any funding that's being presented as being needed for the requested budget.
Hey, Ann, real quick, just on this, I mean, I know it's a projection, but why in year three, or between year two and three, does it go up 35, almost 36%, but then go down to 21, almost 22%? On total revenues? It goes from 18 to 24, back to 19.
Do I agree, what page?
The page one of the projected.
Well, I'm being optimistic that we had the hurricane reimbursement.
Oh.
$6 million.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
It's actually 20, I'm sorry, yeah, it's 2021.
Yes, because of this.
Sitting in the middle there.
See where it says.
And quite honestly, no, you know, we don't really know, but that was the year we had some capital projects that we needed some money for, so I thought, well, hopefully by that year. And again, just like anything else, as we get closer, I mean, it's, it's a projection, but, so I didn't want to be overly optimistic, but I thought by 2021, maybe.
Where'd you flip the coin, in which room?
Sometimes you get lucky then.
Right.
So that's how things are moving, and you see the assumed increases in the expenditure side. Okay, the next page two is gas tax. That was a little bit more straightforward with increases, and we have received the state estimates on gas tax, and I did want to let you know that I'm going to be reviewing those. The state estimates, I'll tell you the experience I had on Thursday. Thursday, they came out with the communication services tax, or estimate for FY '19, a lot higher than what we're collecting in the current fiscal year. So I called the contact person, and I just wanted to understand how he came up with such a high number, and explained to me all these formulas and spreadsheets and everything that he had, but wanted me to give him some time so he could take a look at it. On Friday, he called back and said he found an error in the spreadsheet, and it's not going to be as high as he originally projected, and more in line with what's, what we've budgeted here, so that's why you just need to be careful with those, anyone's estimate. So, but I was, I do want to look at them, and I like to look at, nothing's better than knowing what you're currently getting. Of course, circumstances can change, but at least that gives you a history.
Right.
So that's a little more reliable. So we'll be looking at that, but assuming that 1%. And again, we have some transfers to capital projects, large, large amount in FY 2021, but maintaining our projected unassigned fund balance there. And road impact fees, that's always difficult, and community development has been providing the five-year projections for me, and they're using information based on their development orders that they have, so, thing that's, tends to be in our, I had a lot of discussions last year with, with John, and he was, gave me a lot of information and insight, that a lot of our future development may actually be commercial, and they're, John would be fair to say they're a little less predictable, even on the timing, because they may have people come in and talk about projects, and then they, the projects don't move forward right away, or there's other things that change. So it's, it's difficult to project, but, and you can tell the numbers are larger in FY 2020 than 2021, because we do have information of projects that are currently underway and can expect those fees to be collected.
But leaving aside to the nearest $100,000 and nearest million, the fact is, the city's getting built out.
Right.
So it is, it is, these numbers are a melting ice cube, I mean, they're just going to get smaller over time.
Right.
Compared to what you had up there in the historical slides, which were, I mean, in 2006, it was way above 7, it may have been closer to 10 one of the years before that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is a trend we really, other than adjusting the road impact fee fund, which, fees, which could have some effect, the trend is down.
Page four, park impact fees, similar, use the information that we were provided and going out in the later years. This. going out in the later years, just minimal amounts being projected there. The building fee fund.
Lockbox.
That's, that's another one that's hard. And again, I spoke to John pretty extensively last year about this, and then our contracts would adjust level service if we have a decline in the building permitting areas.
But in any event, this money is available only for, it's available only for limited purposes.
Right. And we do have substantial fund balance in there to continue to provide the required service if revenues continue to decline. And then the 2014 debt service fund, and of course, we'll be following up on the comments that were made earlier today about where these revenues should be flowing. And if there's available capacity within the gas tax fund and allowable based on how the money was spent for the project to continue to provide that funding stream. But if we maintained our methodology that we've been currently doing, that's what I mentioned in FY 2020, there would be no need to pull funding from the general fund and the gas tax fund. But we will certainly look into the ability to pull more from the gas tax. And then the 2011, do want to point out that because of what you saw in the road impact fee fund, by year four, there was not enough resources within the road impact fee fund to fund the full 85%. So in that year, this projection is showing use of some of the accumulated funding from the communication services tax, electricity franchise fees to make that final payment that will be due. And this is Mark Giraffe, because as we make changes to the budget, and this is so driven by the budget, we'll be updating it, but it's really important, particularly with the capital improvement plan, to know that we do actually do plan to have, based on our projection, resources when we put some additional projects in there in the later years to make sure it's reasonable to expect that we'll have that funding source available.
So 2011 is the Imperial Parkway?
Right.
So you, all right, okay. Forget it.
Okay. All right. And that's all I have on presentation standpoint. I think the next section is discussion, council discussion, and direction.
Okay, council, what's your, what's your pleasure, thoughts, line items?
Well, I wondered, Peter, if we went through the general fund expenditures, not, because there's just a lot of detail in here, and we've been given a lot of detail, and it's Laura, but we've been around this a lot. I thought basically focusing on pages 15 and 16, which are the general fund expenditure summary.
Yep.
All right. And, and I, so I want to start with the fact that, so there is kind of chaff in this thing, which is the hurricane. And to Amy's point, it doesn't, you know, you have to work to back it out.
Yep.
Okay. So like, for example, the comparison right at the top where it says operating expenditures going down $5 million, that's not like massive cost efficiencies coming through, that's just a hurricane coming off. Okay? So what I did was, I went to the second page, 16, and the hurricane is basically in the other number here, at least the bulk of it. And if I'm saying anything wrong, you stop me or, Arlene.
No, it's, it's.
All right. The hurricane is in there. It's the number that shows as expected, 2017, 18, 7 million, four. That's not the entire hurricane, there's some other stuff in there, but the hurricane is in there, and it's what's moving that number around. So I backed out the hurricane. I just went back to page 75, I backed out the hurricane numbers. And I actually backed out the all other, so I got a little different number for the current request year. Ann had 13. I backed out all the other, okay? But my point is that, going back to something I said before, last year, we did a lot of, and staff did, we, a lot of work on paring down the personal and operating expense budget. Because when we came in this time last year, we wanted it put back to prior, a prior year, we took out over $1,500,000 out of that. So, you know, I don't want that getting lost here because, I mean, you know, because people, well, aren't you taking anything out? They basically took a huge chunk out last year, $1,500,000. And they ended up with an original budget, let's say, extra hurricane, all right, for last year, for the year we're in, all right, that is, was much, much more trimmed and much more realistic in the sense it didn't have a lot of padding in it. I'm not saying padding is like, I'm not saying that's a pejorative term, but, all right, than the previous years had. So, in other words, so when you look and you see original and expected, leaving the hurricane out, they're all, you know, we could talk about a few line items, some of which have already been explained here by staff, but those numbers came in really, really well. They came in really, really well. As those expense numbers came in well, as against realistic expense budgeting. So, you know, my math, which takes out the other.
It's like 16 million?
Yeah, it shows, shows, you know, their request for what is essentially personal services and operating expenditures and the small part of our capital outlays, it's not capital projects, but they call it capital outlays, going up from just a run rate of 12,332 to 12,622. And I guess I tip my hat on that.
That's fiscal year '18 to '19.
Yeah, from, 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 from backing out the other.
The other.
Now, you know, don't hold me, I'm not, that's Ann's job here and it's exact numbers, but.
And it doesn't, as long as we have the concept.
Right. But order of magnitude, you know, I think we can talk about some individual increases here, but this is, to me, you know, leaving aside what you said, starting from zero, absolute zero, this is an excellent job, in my view. I, that, you know, this, you're talking about from 12,300,000 to 12,600,000. What is it, $300,000 on a base of 12,332,000? So, like I was last year, when I was the guy pushing the million five, I'm all for getting more money out, but I don't want to trim so much that Arlene can't do her job here, you know? So that's, that's my takeaway, that this is a darn good job in terms of, all over, but in terms of the personal operating. So I, in my view, I would just go through some select items here, which are the increase items, rather than, unless Arlene and council wants to do it, go through, have the staff presentation from every department about every, about every item. That's all right, Pete?
Yep.
Good place to start.
Yeah. So, so I've highlighted ones to talk about. City attorney Audrey's already done. All right. So what I'm looking at is the second to last column, which is requested increase or decrease from original budget of last year, which, as I say, was a realistic budget. So, you know, I looked at it all, but I'm not spending a lot of time complaining about decreases, which Arlene's got a lot of in here. So I'm just focusing on the increases. City attorney Audrey's already explained. Communications is the next large one, $91,000, and we're hearing $68,000 of that is this closed captioning, ADA. I don't know, Arlene, is it worth talking about the other 30?
Laura, can you go over any?
Yeah.
Hello, Director of Communications, Laura Taylor. You will see that the number that you're talking about is due to some savings from our health insurance, as well as a position that we had that was unexpectedly out.
Yeah. Well, there's actually an increase of 30.
It's an increase from the 2008 budget, but you also had some positions that had, you had some unfilled positions that you filled during the year as well.
Right. So what we're seeing is the $68,000 with closed captioning.
Right.
Some health insurance costs, and then also personnel due to.
Against, yes.
Are you still looking at page 15?
I'm using that as a base of operations.
You know, but I, looking at the second to last, I don't see where you get the 30.
Oh, I just, I just.
Oh, from, oh, you're looking at the second column, minus 68.
Second from the last, 91 minus 68, not 30, it's 21, 22. Yeah, there you go.
I'm just curious about the new website, which I assume is still coming?
It is, we're still working on it. We're about midway through the project now.
And like, how much does that cost?
We had a total of $35,000.
Oh, that's not bad. That's very good.
So the next one I have is finance, of all people, Ann.
Yeah.
Which is up a little bit. I mean, these are not, you know, we used to be talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, this is small.
We're subject to the single audit this year, so that was a $5,000 additional expenditure there in health insurance.
Okay. And then parks and rec is down, however, it's down, I believe it's down macro. There's an issue here, there's so many numbers here, but the total is here elsewhere, and I believe it's, no, it's up 60,000. I'm sorry, it's up 60. Obviously, and all this stuff, there's a lot of stuff flowing this way and that way, but any explanation why it's up? And I'm not saying up is a crime, I just want to understand.
No, it just looks like to me, it looks like parks and rec admin's up the largest amount, it's 38, so it's probably the same thing we've been hearing as insurance costs.
Insurance costs, we'll see.
Other issues. The only next biggest one is $11,000 for.
The pool, I think, is due to some thermal.
Yes, there's a thermal pump that's required for, for health and safety.
So that shows up, it's kind of a capital item, but it runs through the operating budget? It's got to be fixed, is that why?
It's got to be fixed, yes.
Right.
I have a question about just personnel costs, and I think I wrote to you, you know, we have a pay for performance, and could you just clarify how that works? Originally, when I saw that in the budget, I thought it was like a bonus payment, but it's not really that. What it does is that you don't get, employees don't get like a.
We do not get a cost.
A step raise. So any person who has an adjustment to their pay comes through this pay for performance.
Correct.
So it's actually.
It's based on a performance evaluation.
It continues on an annual basis. You get, you get an up, step up, and then.
Correct.
And that's, and that's how it's included in the budget here. We've already accounted the fact that we've given raises to the annual salary of the individual employee.
And it's not guaranteed, that is the, that is based on the most we would expect, if that was prepared, but not every single employee, there's a percentage that they could receive, and they can't, they're not necessarily all receive the highest percentage, it's based on the performance evaluation.
Once it's given, then they just have a salary increases, and that's what we include in the budget.
We switched to pay for performance about five years ago. So we have two types of pay increases. We have pay for, 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 pay for performance, and we have market adjustments. We are not requesting a market adjustment this year, we have not requested one since 2014, 15 budget year. To kind of clarify your question that you asked, pay for performance is merit-based, all based on their annual evaluations. It's halfway through the year, so you only see, in the budget, you only see six months of it, because it's effective April 1st. If we do a market adjustment, it would be starting in October 1, and that's what moves our pay scales. Our pay scales don't move for the pay for performance.
Does that ascend to parks and recreation also?
All employees are included, and like Arlene said, it's on an average of 0 to 4% depending on where they score.
So this increase here could be related to that?
No.
No?
It's in the, it's in the, I'm sorry.
No, pay for performance is in a.
Separate.
It's back in other, Amy, it's 50,000 total, right?
That's correct, but once it's allocated, it's for the upcoming year, for fiscal year '19, it is in those salary numbers now.
Right, but in this summary on page 15, that doesn't already includes the first.
It would from this fiscal, so if they received an increase in April of this year, that's now reflected as an increase in the budget.
So this 38,000 could be related to that, that we see on that first line?
Yes.
It's going to be that, it's also going to be health insurance.
Right, because it goes hand in hand.
But to be clear, next year's pay for performance is a total of $50,000?
Correct.
And that appears in the other line with the hurricanes.
Yeah.
So, any, any personnel incurred cost going forward would be related to 50,000 in the subsequent fiscal year, and then you have to add on all the other benefits that are related to salary.
That 50,000 is including the taxes and the other benefits.
Oh, it does, it does? Oh, so the maximum increase.
Only that's benefits that are included in relation to the salary increase, not health, anything else.
Okay.
So it would be taxes, we pay for a one-time salary and life insurance, it would be that, and, and what am I missing, FRS?
So as a percentage of personnel expense, it's pretty minimal going from one fiscal year to the other, but the benefits are probably overtaking that, right?
If we can clarify that, the 50,000 would be what would be for six months, so.
The run rate is 100.
So for the next, so the next fiscal year is one that gets hit harder, which for fiscal year, this current fiscal year, it was 44,000. So for FY '19, it's really an $88,000.
So we have, not really, we sort of have built into the system roughly 100,000 increase in personnel expenditure from one year to the other.
And then, and you would see that reflected the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Depending on the number of employees that reach that percentage and where they fall in.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
So that's 100 out of 5 million.
Right, I just.
No, no, I'm, just.
No, I want to understand, because when I look at these numbers, there's an increase, I'm trying to say, why is it increasing, you know, how do we do it? So now I understand it very well.
While we're on that other page, the animal control services has gone up, who we pay for that?
We pay that to Lee County.
Lee County, so that's one of our increases here, to Lee County for animal control.
Based on our contract that we receive from.
Right. So you know, Astero, I think we have a lot more cats than they do in Astero.
We have a lot.
A lot more cats.
We do.
And they're not all Fred's, all right? So the, so.
Well, we have feral cats.
Right.
We do.
Right, that's right. So Astero took this on themselves, and they outsourced it separately. I'm assuming, and they literally were counting per cat how much it was costing them, it was like five or 10,000 a cat. But that's not our situation. Do you know much about it? I know Martha's the expert on this, Fred, but do you know much about it? Is it worthwhile looking into what they're doing?
We can look into it, Tony, if you can find out based on.
What's the land area in the universe Astero?
Well, you can't, the DRGR is, you know, they don't have a DRGR, so, you know.
Well, I would think you'd have some relation between how big an area you've got and how many feral cats you have.
How many people are feeding them?
Well, I think what we can do is find out what Astero's contract is and what it covers compared to what the contract we have with Lee County covers, and have an idea of comparison of that.
And how many animals we're.
How many animals are part of that.
We're collecting, that would be great. Are we going, I still am curious about the law enforcement items, you know, where the difference between 5 million in one area and the, I think you showed part of that, 1.7 and two, and you added a few things up there for public safety.
Yes.
That add up to two, but I'm still $3 million away, which I don't understand. I think it comes out of a different fund, like a building or something.
It's the building fee fund.
What is that for public safety?
They do all the permitting and inspection, you know, so to make sure that buildings are in accordance with the state code.
When we can utilize the lockbox of the building fee fund, we try to, so there was some expenses we were looking at with Tony that. some expenses we were looking at with Tony that could possibly go for life safety issues.
Did we have that? Is that the first time we've done that, or?
No.
We did that.
We've always taken it.
You're questioning why it's considered public safety?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's.
It's just the law.
That's the way the state categorizes it, from the standpoint of the function.
But not on this page. This page is much more realistic.
Okay.
No, this is all general.
Right.
That's general.
I just, the inconsistency in the totals is what drove me, but now I get it. So it's some things like inspections that we.
And following the code.
Literally are public safety, but it's not the kind of public safety that we normally think about. Okay, thank you.
So I don't have anything else myself on the expenditure stuff. I mean, I might have some stuff offline with Arlene, but.
Like the point that Dallas brought up about, where is that?
It's in here.
We provided funding for that. We restored the same funding, the request that they had last year.
That's already in there.
Which is already in there. So it provided the twenty-five thousand for their phase one of the historical village study, the fifty thousand for the grants, and then ten thousand for operating expense for their historical education programs, which would cover the expense of working with Antonio to do recording of oral histories. It also provided the funds for the photographs they took, too. And the other, the Art in Public Places Board is funded at their request level as well. And that's all on page twenty-two of the vote.
Do you want to go on to the capital projects?
We wanted to, well, do we want to talk about like the events, which was a big controversy last time?
Oh, whatever you.
Sure, we can go, we looked at, and Laura can come up as well, but we looked at, we had individual meetings with the council members, and then we also had the Special Events Committee fully discuss each of the events. There does reflect, the budget does reflect a reduction in Celebrate Benita. The remaining events stayed at their current funding level, and the idea was to have it more of a homegrown type event, and then also look at other revenue enhancement processes that could potentially happen there. That was based on the feedback we received from the individual, but Holiday in the Park was funded at the same level as was Fourth of July, the same level of funding for the veterans' events as well.
And what page are you on?
Page forty-four. So Celebrate, we did what we did this year for the twelve thousand?
We did. After some research and feedback, we did keep it to twenty thousand, which was around the approximate number that was spent this year. What we will be looking at doing is seeing if there are some ways to partner with possible other events that are going on in our community, or looking at maybe different models to utilize for the event, and see how that goes with the Special Events Committee.
Could we talk about Fiesta and how that worked, and how we think it should work in the future, and if we want to continue that funding for that, please?
So the Outreach Committee did decide that they would like to vote on how they would spend the funds that were allocated to Fiesta from City Council, and at the time, they decided that they would like to have an outside entity, organization, private entity, run the event. Univision was chosen this year. Next year, if it continues this way, they would go out to bid, to see who bids to do the project or to do the event, and then all of the expenditures had to come through the committee for approval, and they were paid through the invoices to the city.
They were paid through invoices to the city, is that what you said?
Yeah, so basically, if they did a sound system, they had to come, turn the invoice in to the city, had to get it approved through the Outreach Committee, and then it was paid through our finance department.
I'd like to discuss whether we're comfortable having that, I mean, that's kind of an outlier for how we do events in the city, and particularly since we've cut down some of the other things. Are we comfortable having, first of all, a committee do that, you know, sort of control the event? And I think we had some, we talked about having some policy for where the city would support events, you know, some process, which I can't even remember what we decided on a policy, but, you know, there were some criteria when we do that?
We did look, historically, the committees have funded the events and ran the event in-house. So Special Events Committee put on Celebrate, Holiday in the Park. Last year, we did discuss the possibility of going out to find private organizations that would assist us with running some of the events. Riverfest is the best example. At that time, we had a private organizer come through, CGT Kayaks, and a nonprofit partner to run Riverfest. They did the invoices similar to what Fiesta did, but Fiesta is a newer event, and the Outreach Committee is one of our newer committees, so they are still working through the process of how they'd like to plan this event in the future. If it continues to go the way that it did last year, they will be going out to bid, but that would be up to council.
Pete, do you have a view on this?
The only thing I would say is, as a newer committee, and as a newer committee that is doing wonderful things for the community, I don't, but I don't have a thought on whether it should be in-house or out-ho, you know.
Outhouse.
Yeah, outhouse, exactly, run externally. That doesn't twist me or wind me either way.
Yeah, that's where my question comes in. It's not that we shouldn't have an Outreach Committee, not that they're not otherwise doing a good job, but the way I perceive it, and I may be wrong, they picked, and nothing, let's just talk structurally, not names are kind of irrelevant here, right? So the concept, I think we've been trying to evolve, is minimize the cost, have outside organizations come in and sponsor events. That brings the cost down, together with all the hard work that Laura and the committee have done to bring the cost down. So you get people who are saying, you know, I love Benita, I want to, I want to, I want to give money to sponsor this event, all right? My perception, which may not be correct, all right, is that what happened here was not that, but they had, they took the money and they gave it to an outside organization which viewed it, at least one thing I heard, was as a profit-making venture, and it was kind of a subsidizing of that, and I didn't think, I got questions. If that is what it is, I don't think that's the way we want to go, or at least without a heck of a lot of discussion.
Do we think that's the way, I mean, Laura, there was a lot of costs involved, a lot of money, a lot more than ten thousand certainly on that event. But whatever it is, it should be consistent with any other event.
Okay.
I think what might add transparency to, if council decides they wanted to do a request for proposal, all of that should be outlined in the request for proposal, where the funds received are, what expenses would be that they would be bringing to the table as well, what expenses the city has, and then where the end share dollars go, is it?
Part of my question, Arlene, is why are we doing requests for proposal? I thought the concept of these events was, the city had a stake in money, there are certain events we want to have, we're looking for sponsors, not outsource the event, and giving who's going to come in and we're going to just pay them ten thousand or thirty thousand or whatever. I mean, I don't think we're suggesting, what is the number here, for Celebrate, that we're taking, or for, you know, or that we're just going to hire an event company and give them twenty thousand, forty thousand, thirty thousand dollars, and say, well, how can, you know, you do this, and we'll give you that money, and otherwise you figure it out. I don't know if it's for today as much as, I just don't think that's the way we should be going, and I don't think this, any committee should be in a position of, well, we're going to just give, farm out, and we're going to decide who we're going to farm out to, and we're just going to take the city's money and give it to somebody.
And I would like to, I mean, I think we should have a discussion with the Outreach Committee, but there is an aspect to it that I would like to have a discussion about whether we prefer to have the direction go in more like an inclusive kind of thing where we recognize all heritages, like a heritage day. I mean, that, that I think is more in keeping with the concept of why we have these kinds of events. And I'd just like, would like to have that discussion with whoever is running it, you know, and that's the kind of operation that I've seen in other communities that works very effectively, where you talk about all the contributions that the different cultures have given to your city, because we're complex. We're not, we're not just Hispanic and non-Hispanic, we're lots of, lots of different things. We're, you know, we have, we still celebrate sort of the, it goes with our patriotic, welcome everybody, out of one, many, out of many, one, that kind of concept. That's where I think would be, I would be very strongly supported of. Not that I'm not supportive of this, I just think that it needs a discussion, and I don't see that we, as a council, have, are having that much input there, especially if you outsource it, like what you're talking about.
And that is in line with some of the discussions that they've been having recently. They have discussed an expo of sorts to be incorporated, but it probably would be very beneficial to have the two groups together to discuss the future of what you see for Fiesta and how you would like it ran.
Thank you.
We didn't just give them ten thousand dollars, it was, they brought forth invoices, and we paid those invoices.
Correct.
So we know where the money went.
Correct. We have an accounting of each of those, and they were expenses directly involved with the actual event, and they were paid, but.
But we had to say so, what the expenses were. You want to buy it on cotton candy or whatever, that's what the expenses were.
The committee did ask for them to put forth the requests for what they'd like to have invoiced to the city, and so they could vote on it, and it was hard cost, things like sound system, cordlets, entertainment, that type of cost, and that was the parameters that the committee did put there, the staff as well.
One thing I am comfortable saying about this is, knowing that the expenses for that were discussed to be around fifty thousand dollars for that, but I don't know if they were, they weren't, but in this model and of this vein of going to find sponsorships, I would challenge any of these other events to see who has an eighty percent privately-funded, twenty percent publicly-funded event scenario on any of these other events. So that much I am comfortable saying.
Okay.
I don't think there's any other event that's eighty percent privately-funded.
Right.
In fact, I know there isn't.
Right, right.
How we do the logistics, or the bookkeeping, or the outreach, or the accounting.
Right.
Maybe we want to not make it, it says Holiday in the Park, but how much do we do for the Jewish community and recognition? So if we're going to dissect what these events are and how they're run, let's be consistent that way, too.
At the risk of appearing like Scrooge, I'm going to raise another one, which is, I am really struck by the fact that we don't have any social service budget in this town now, and we have a lot of needs, and they are met by volunteer organizations a hundred percent. I mean, and we know who they are, and they take the burden off the government, and we spend zero, zero, all right? And so we have holiday decorations of forty-seven thousand. I'm not actually suggesting we take that out or reduce it, but it does strike me that, at least we should talk about it. We're spending fifty thousand dollars for decorations, and we're spending zero, not that the fifty would get us much elsewhere, we're spending zero on social services. Like, what about spending twenty-five thousand dollars on a heck of a lot of toys for a heck of a lot of kids and having fewer decorations? I don't know. It's just something I wanted to say, I don't know.
Where's that light item, Pete? I hear what you're saying.
It's on page forty.
Forty.
Yeah, and it's, it's under Special Events, and it's Winter Holiday Decorations, forty-seven thousand dollars.
But do we really want to be playing Santa Claus?
Yeah.
You know, twenty-five thousand dollars buying toys for kids.
I'm just, one example.
It says expected is only forty-eight hundred. So where's the drop?
That's the increase.
That's a change.
That's the change. That's plus forty, yeah.
But they used to hand out presents, we used to do a toy drive, but there was other issues with doing that, the store to develop the toys, and then a few other things. I will tell you.
I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just using that as an example of hypothetic social service outreaches. That's all.
You know, there are all kinds of social services that are not direct payments or direct.
Like what?
Like, for example, what the neighborhood services goes, and I know.
Right.
They go around and they help the people to clean up their neighborhood, like having holiday lights because people don't have the opportunity to see, I mean, there's all kind of psychic, psychic kinds of things, and I personally think, and I, that the private approach to this is the best way, because they have control. I sort of have an issue about public charity versus private charity.
Right.
And my philosophy says that I get no grace from public charity. It's, I get grace from my own personal charity, whether that's helping people directly or contributing those kinds of things, but that's the philosophy. I know that a lot of people feel that government should be the, you know, the purveyor of this, and in times of real need, you know, I mean, if we were having people starving on the streets.
Right.
And no one was taking care of them, I would agree with you.
So, yeah, but I'm not, we're talking about polls here. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, we're not spending a penny. So, and not only that, we've got charities building parks, we had Cafe of Life, spent six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the last public park that was built in Benita Springs. It's actually flowing the other way.
It's flowing.
Just making a point.
Right. I mean, there is social services, and supposed to, again, getting to our nemesis Lee County.
Right.
They have a social service budget.
Fair point.
And I don't under, I'm totally unaware, because I haven't explored it.
Right.
Where that comes through in Benita Springs. That would be a question I would like to ask.
Fair point.
All right. I mean, if there is a concern about that, I want to know, is there such a thing as an entitlement coming to us from Lee County? Probably not, you know, but that, let's ask that question, if you're concerned about that. I would be in favor, because we're already funding that, again.
Fair point.
Take your percentage of forty, forty-five million dollars, see what they're doing.
Forty-six, yeah.
Well, whatever it is, forty-six million dollars, and say, they're doing A, B, and C. Are we getting anything, you know?
Just for historical knowledge, prior to the recession, the City Council did have a budget called Partnering for Results, and it was an RFP process where local nonprofits would apply for a total budget amount, and there was a committee appointed by council to review those. They would just meet for the committee, and then the committee would sunset. I remember a budget of approximately a hundred thousand, maybe the most I thought was a hundred and fifty thousand. Some of the recipients in the past were the local Boy Scouts, United Way, Cafe of Life. They had requirements within the Request for Proposals that they had to be Benita-based charities and provide documentation on that.
Basically have a charitable fund that you distribute to local charities.
Correct, and that was, it was called Partnering for Results was the program, and that was done prior to the recession. That program went away, I think, around two thousand.
But I mean, that would be the only logical way that you could do that, because we're not going to have a social service, I mean, you know, government light, we would contract that out, so you contract it out to these private entities that are doing a fabulous job.
Right.
And, you know, I, you know.
I just want to see what people think, that's all. I'm just.
I just think sometimes it was in their mixed message, here we are wanting to do a private partnership with all the special events, now we're wanting to help the nonprofits and donate to that.
I'd like to make a point.
Right.
If we hadn't had Irma and had this nine-million-dollar hole.
Right.
I think this would be a germane discussion. I think we should, I think we've got to take care of getting ourselves back in shape to where we can do the job we're supposed to do.
Both say we hadn't had Irma, what do you think, just generally?
If we had, if we were back where we were.
Right.
I think it would be a poor germane. We've had money that we could do this.
Okay. I just want to air it out, that's all.
I understand. And even if we would happen to raise the adloreum or service tax or anything, that, all that money's going to do is win and help us creep back up to a decent reserve till we start, so I, I mean, I agree that we could do this, but I think if we do.
I'm not suggesting, I just want to.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Well, I think Fred brings up a good point. I think somewhere, no one's wanting to ask the question, and I'll ask it to Arlene right now. With this budget you've presented us, at the one point eight seven three zero, is that where we need to be? That does, and you know, thumbing through this and.
Oh, the mill, the mill rate?
The mill rate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, that's what we're here for. On Wednesday, we've got to set the mill rate.
Right.
So.
Wednesday or today?
I think we're going to sell it today. It's only intended for today.
Okay.
So today.
Right.
But I thought.
Set the max, yeah.
Yeah, set the max, that's what I'm saying, and that's. And that's kind of where I'm getting at and it's kind of off of Fred's name. I mean, we, maybe this is where we're getting ready to go and how much, you know, with what we have right now, appears that there's 406,000 over. Where is that going? Has that already been toppled up in this budget you guys already given us?
No, and we've got some addi- that's the rebuild. And then we had, we still have some additional, a few discussional topics that were either emails that were given to.
Well, and, and that's what I'm getting at.
It is gobbled up.
With the new cameras and so on and so forth. So to do any of these, we're going to have to raise the mill rate. If we want to do any projects that we've got to go to the state with a 50% match, we've got to either raise the mill rate, raise the gas, not the gas.
What you want to call it, yeah.
Communication or electricity. And I think that's kind of going to Fred. I think that needs to be the germane talk right now.
Absolutely.
Is that.
But along what we're talking about, I thought Ann, you said if we didn't have to do set the trim, that we actually had more time, but.
I said the state tent line is August 4th.
The max trim, the max trim.
The max.
You could make it two right now. It's not what we're doing, just giving you headroom.
And I, I guess my thought is since we've got this state of distress, why don't we pretty well plan to set it more at the maximum that date she gave as opposed to jumping into it right?
Well, that's fine. I just think that somewhere along the line, we've got to have a discussion. And, and I hate to put it on Ann and the finance staff. If we set a millage rate of whatever, pick it, say one, just go round numbers. We pick it at one, one mil.
Right.
Ann's going to go back and create that budget and put all the numbers that we think in there. Then we're going to come back and go, yeah, we don't like that. And then we're going to have to go change it again. Eh, we still don't like it and change it. That puts a lot of work on staff whereas if we could come today and say, water projects, we want.
Well, she's got the, as you know, she showed us the slide that shows the yield on increasing ad valorem, all right? And I don't think it's very complicated. I don't think she's got to redo a whole budget. You're basically, whether it's through that or through these other fees, all right? What, all you're doing is building back the essential reserve.
Right.
You know, you, you, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I think the critical issue here is, is that unassigned general fund budget. And we've got to pick a number there in mind. I think that should not be zero. What that number is, we need to discuss.
Right.
And then the second thing is to look at what I call the efficiency of tax of revenue raising. To get any kind of meaningful.
That's the wrong slide.
Revenue raising out of the mill rate, you have to adjust it quite significantly because our mill rate is so low.
Right.
It's below one mil. So the most efficient way of raising revenue is not through the ad valorem, but through those special taxing entities like the communication and electric. Because you could get a big bang out of there immediately. And then we also have a sunset function, so it's not like a, the problem we have here is because it's of the FEMA basically. And then the fact that we dissipated all our reserves of any all sorts over the past year. So I would be more in favor of doing something like the communication tax. Raise it, get your, whatever you're going to get, 700,000 dollars. Put that immediately back into the unassigned balance. And know that by the time we sunset it, the rest of the stuff should kick in and we could just go back to normal. And we tie it to what, this is somewhat an emergency funding kind of situation.
Oh, which it is.
Otherwise, we, you know, to get 700,000, we have to raise the, what do we have to raise here? Like it has to go up to one or something, right?
Yeah, it's, a penny is 98,000.
All right, so, so we'd have to.
Oh, so seven cent.
Yeah.
The other thing to say is on these fees, we're still below our peers around us. We're still below our peers. The other thing I would say is on the ad valorem, and I agree with you on the ad valorem, but somehow, someday, we got to really look ourselves in the mirror because this is what I, as I said in the last meeting, is what I learned from, I don't want, I don't want to emulate what they've done, but, I mean, you look at Cape Coral and Fort Myers or Naples. Not so much Naples there because they also have a fire department in there, all right? But, and so does Cape Coral, but, you know, they're at six and eight. We're at point eight. Not to say that's where we should go, but, you know, I don't think the public quite understa- you know, some.
But we are reviewing the possibility that utility fee of getting additional.
Which I think is a good funding device.
Very critical project in, in store water management. You know, this is, we're earmarking funds, it's basically.
And then maybe in a broader sense, probably a very general sense, are we looking, because I guess it all goes on the back of the taxpayer, right? We all understand that. But do you want to do it kind of from a straight, um, no, point of view? Or when you look at the communications tax or some of these other taxes for options, you know, you are dealing with for-profit companies.
Right.
That will use it as a pass-through to the taxpayer. I'm not trying to mince or dice.
Right, right, right.
But I think maybe that's another way to look at it, right?
Yep.
The people are going to pay, there's no question about it.
And that's the ultimate bottom line, right?
This is, we're getting revenue and it's coming from the residents in one way or another.
See, I mean, where Pete and I live, I mean, we have a community association, we have a club. They got whacked by the hurricane. They put in an assessment and nobody said, why the heck are you doing this? They got whacked by the hurricane. I mean.
And just to put it in real numbers, I think it was 250 dollars.
I forget what it was. I forget what it was.
I don't know if they pro-rate.
It was real money. It was real money.
Pretty sure it was like 250.
Far more than we're talking about here.
And actually, the, the people that are going to grumble over one penny are going to gro- you know, it's the same grumble over whatever the number is.
Ours was, now, depending on whether you were a golf member or not, was either 1,500 or 1,800 and some bucks for about.
What was Worthington's?
Uh, they were more than that.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It was because they had that damaged horse and halfway there, so golf, uh, golf club member.
But then of course you pay a fee, Amy, sorry, just for, you know, whether it's one penny or 250 dollars, then you get the folks, well, what about that tree and what about this? I mean, so you're going to get some of that no matter what we do, but just to bring it in perspective for what we're doing here with our budget.
And you're going to laugh because at Pelican Landing, we did not do an assessment and we are getting criticized because we didn't go in and do an assessment because the landscape has not been restored to what they think it should be. And now we're asking for some funding to, to hire a landscape architect to fix our community. But that's, we're getting criticized because we didn't do an assessment. So people understand that there's sort of emergency situations as they expect us to take care of one way or the other. If you can't pay for that operating budget, they said, basically send us a bill. So whether you do it or don't, you still.
Sure, right.
There is a concept of relating emergency expense to payment. So if we're going to do this, I think we ought to do it now while we have this emergency expense and, and a fiscal problem, which I think is evident.
Well, the reason's there.
The reason's there. But I think again, do we have a, a concept of what we think that, you know, how much do you want to store, restore that unassigned balance?
Well, it ain't minus 287, that's for sure. And that's where we are now.
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's already in the budget, so, but that's just to put the, I'm talking about this, the beginning thing, it's zero. What do we want that number to be?
Well, I think you have to bill to it. I don't think you can do it in one shot.
You can't do it on one.
Right.
But we have to have a prudent thing that we can explain to the public.
Right.
That we're billing this back.
So.
And it's, let's be honest, it's somewhat of a temporary bill.
Correct.
I mean, if FEMA would.
Correct. If they come in.
If the phone rang right now.
If Ann's Christmas present comes true in a year.
Well, that's what I mean. If the phone rang right now, we'd be, we'd be saying, oh, they have 8.173 and we're done for the day and it's everybody going to watch. But that's not the case. And except we're still 3 million light from the 9 million hole.
Correct.
Well, even if.
Correct, correct. Even if they gave it, right.
You're still 3 million light.
Right.
But, I mean. I'm pretty simplistic. I think we should look at that spec, because I have a bias that I want to do it through the other things. Whatever, raise it to whatever we can, put that money into, on a, on a.
Well, I would shoot for a million.
I mean, I guess my thought, I mean, the biggest thing's going to come out of, and I've lost words to say, but it's what are our long-term plans? We need to have 2 million dollars to go to Tallahassee come February. You know, we'll get 700 from the, from the electricity, we'll get 300 or 400 from the community payback. That's not it. And that's not really anything.
Well, it's a start. It's a start.
But I mean, it doesn't do anything for the un- assigned fund balance either.
On that, I did talk to James Muller recently. And he, he agreed with me that for a lot of it, you can take it out of your FY plus one. Because by the time you go through the process, by the time the governor signs into a bill, by the time they're ready to pass out the money, you're real close to the next one.
So that's when you're betting on the come line.
So is it?
No matter how much you. But you're also not spending the money unless you're awarded money, right?
Right.
Which, by the way, is it, I just want to, sorry. It's an issue on Logan with, because that's drainage before it's anything else. And we've got to spend money for drainage even if we don't get the money. So, and that's, she's got baked in 2 million, a million.
He did also say that he believed that some of the money that we had already spent, we could have claimed towards matching.
All right.
Like Peter's making point, we can claim some of the funds that we spent on Logan as a match that we've already spent.
So is it total project cost within the capital improvement project or is it just year one and two? That, that's would be my question because when we look at the total project cost over the long range of the, of the, of the capital improvement plan, you're looking at large, a lot larger dollar of figure than you are for what we can actually fund in year one and two.
Well, do you want to talk about this or you want to talk about, what do you want to do?
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just.
What do you want?
Putting that ugly word out there. We need to, I guess, figure out what our long-term plan is and what, what do we, going back to kind of Amy.
Financing.
Yeah, well, going back to Amy, okay, what's our magic number? We want to have her.
I've got a.
Unassigned fund balance.
We're always going to be.
Actually minus, it's negative. Correct.
Is it possible?
It's negative 218 really, or 2.
287.
And on our tax bill that, that the tax budgeter sends out, is it possible, let's say we did some of this with ad valorem, can we put a separate line item current, that this is like a.
Interesting idea.
13 recovery assessment or whatever, can that be listed within.
Interesting idea.
And within the grand total.
Interesting idea.
And if you don't know, maybe we could call and find out.
Are you talking about a special assessment?
No, no. What he's saying, he wants people to know what the heck we're doing here.
Oh, right. An ex- an explanation on the tax.
Let's say hypothetically went up to a dollar 20 cents. So we'd say 20, what is, about a little less, 40 cents is temporarily 13 loss assessment recovery fund.
Right.
So we could come up with a catchy phrase.
That reflects the reality.
Yeah. And that, then they see it and they get it.
The word temporary there.
Yeah, we can say temporary.
But we don't.
Well, like.
All they're going to see is the, the total bill.
Well, she's asking a question.
They're only 5% of the, they're only going to notice it.
I wouldn't agree with that because they look at the whole bill. I, I think more trans- I hate to sound like, I think Fred's got a point. I don't know if it's possible.
I don't know if it can be done, but I think it'd be worth asking anyway.
It's kind of like, it's, well, you didn't get an assessment, but when people got an assessment, they said, this is an assessment.
For two years and then it would be sort of a rollback, an automatic rollback if you do that.
My community's already doing another assessment.
Another?
Mm-hmm.
So people understand.
Well, I don't agree with it.
Oh, you don't? Oh, all right. Well, it's too much. Okay, I agree with you.
And then there's a train of thought to battening down the hatches and you know the money's, you know 6 million's coming, right? We know it's coming, but we don't know when.
When.
But that's an awful hard way to plan a budget.
And the other thing I'd say, Pete, is we already have battened down the hatchet. In other words, hatches. I mean, that's why I talked about the million five from last year. These guys trimmed it to the bone. And it's a point you were making last year, Greg. I mean, I don't think we go back and dismantle city government. People aren't expecting that.
Well, no, I, I think that's what I was going with.
Right.
Started this whole conversation. I think that everybody here, this, all of us are, are good with this budget.
Right.
What, what has been presented to us.
Right.
Now, what do we need, or what do we think the city needs to prepare for the future because of this 6, 9 million? How do we recoup from that? And what are we going to recoup it from? And where's it going to?
Well, I.
That's going to be the thing. If we raise millage, they're going to say, all right, where's that going? We're going to have to look in the eye and say, well, X, X dollars are going to go to matching funds. So when we go to Tallahassee, the remainder of it is to, to help stabilize if we have another hurricane. We have no money, proverbial, no money in the bank.
That's my concern.
That, I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's what we got to do. If we're going to raise millage to one or 1.2, or if we're going to raise the gas tax or the other taxes to this, we've got to tell them where it's going. Because right now, with what we've got planned, we can make it on with this.
With that.
With that bare bones, nothing, nothing planning for the future.
Well, the only thing I would, the only thing I would throw on Greg is I think you can't do it in one shot. I think you have to, you have to, you have to build it. I think you have to, you have to, you have to build it. And if we get whacked, you know, we're kind of out there. But I don't think you're going to, you know, raise taxes for $5 million. I mean, that's people, no one's properly going to go for that. And so, no matter what. So I think you've got to just pick a number and build a ladder with a goal of building it back to something reasonable with the understanding, when you look at our projects, you know, what they are. And a lot of projects have been trimmed. I mean, you know, that's not even showing here. A lot of projects have been trimmed or moved out to the future. I mean, I've looked at it. I think a lot of hard work's been done. Logan's a big number. I think we had to spend it, but it's a.
I'm going to draw a number, three million dollars, which is like halfway between what it, you know, it's lower than what we've had in the past, and that, we do it over the two to three years.
Oh, okay.
And hopefully, no, this is, this is a goal.
Right.
We have to pick a goal.
Right.
And figure out how to distribute it. And it's not based on a lot of analysis, because we don't have the material to do that. But the idea that we might start to see some FEMA payments within a two to three year, I think they, it's not a bad expectation that they would do it. We're not going to get the six million, but.
Start, start, yeah.
Start to see it and bring it and start focusing on that, well, it's a little longer, 2023, when our debt is gone for that one. And there was another thing that I thought.
The three million would help make you more whole, because remember, it's a $9 million expense, and we're only getting six million back. So that would be the goal, bringing us back to more being more whole.
So just doing that, and then we can decide.
Well, it's your three, Fred.
How we want to do it, you know, in three years, in two years, and then we can have another look at this going forward within next six to a year in the budget after that. And then I'm off the castle, so then it's your turn. But I mean, I'm just going to, let's, what do you think? Do you want to pick another number? Anybody can.
No, I think it's, I don't have a problem with the number.
Are you saying that we're going to try and increase over three years or three million a year?
Oh, no, net over three years.
Gross over three.
Gross, gross over three years.
Where are you, Fred? You're the one who were, you're the one who was right about this in the beginning.
I think I'm trying to, well.
Is that too little or too, or not enough?
I think it's probably too little.
Okay.
But, but I also don't want to be a tax and spend person.
Right, right.
I agree, it's probably too little, but it's not horrible, you know? And we, and I don't think we're in a position right now with so many uncertainties to bring it to what, I mean, we really should have it up to like five or six million. I mean, that's the real number. But let's do, thus not do it quite like that and try to get something into the budget this year. I think this year's probably the most important time to get it started, because we'll have another look at it after we've been through another fiscal year. But I don't care. If you want to use five million, do the same thing, and then do it over three years.
Well, if we can put that extra line on whatever thing.
I don't know if it's the other one.
We have to find out. If you can, then you can do it with that, or otherwise, you can probably do it with these service taxes and all that.
The thing I appreciate about the service taxes is that we're lower than our peers.
Right.
What I like about it is that it's a sunsetting, it's a sunsetting. That's what I like about it.
And what would those possibilities be in? You'd have the communication option. What are the others?
Communication services tax, which to increase it for one percent would be approximately $400,000 in revenue. First year of adoption, though, generally would be a partial year. Electrical franchise fee to increase that one percent would be annually about $700,000, again, partial year. And Audrey had done some research on the timing. Do you want to address that?
Sure.
For where we are now.
The one we can do quickly.
Could do if the decision was made to move forward.
So short here. First of all, the communication services tax is administered by the Department of Revenue, the state of Florida Department of Revenue. So they do require that the ordinance be adopted and be in place before, I believe, the budget year, I think our budget year, I think it's October 1. I'm doing this from the top of my head right now.
September 30, I think is what was on the paper.
Is it September 30? So we have to do it by that point. The FPL.
Where's that, my friend?
Our agreement with FPL. And I think we were able to start the ordinance with FPL January 1.
Page 25, right.
There's like a 90-day notice, but we can do that at any time of the year. Well, we did the ordinances in 2016, ordinance number 1615 and 1616. I think we started them in December, because both entities need time to mobilize. FPL can do one percent, and we can change up to 5.1%, but the CST, I believe, is the number, correct, Anne, as far as.
We've been always reporting 5.22.
Oh, five, that's right, because you have the extra 0.12 for communities that do not adopt the permanent requirement. Both ordinances are, both increases that were done in 2016, sunset December 31, 2022. So if I do receive direction from council to draft an ordinance with this change, also sunset on those dates, or 2022.
Well, if we did, it might sunset sooner if we hit the jackpot with the FEMA money, but we're still three million short, you're saying, yeah.
Right.
That would be council direction I would need.
Right.
The other question I have is, wasn't one of them, you can't do it all at once, you can't take that big, buy a map.
That's FPL. So FPL, the increase can only step up one percent, but you're at four percent, so if you do step up, the most you could step up anyway. Now, Lee County's franchise was just changed to six percent, so I didn't know.
They were?
Lee County's ordinance, their franchise, no, 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 no. Their ability to go up to six percent.
Ability, oh.
Right, our ability to go up is capped at five percent.
I see.
So whether or not we want to negotiate so we have the potential for the future, that's a council question.
That's a negotiation with them, Audrey, with FPL.
Right, I'm not sure we have a door opening. We don't, they have a waste energy facility, so because of that, they do supply and sell between the two of them. We don't sell to FPL, so we don't have that negotiation open until sunset.
Should have put those things in.
So, Anne, to make a comparable ad valorem change.
Right.
Versus the special revenue. This one would raise like two of them together at 1.19, is that correct, or something like that? So what would we have to raise the ad valorem to do the comparable?
About 10, 10 cents.
So that would be like 90, 92 or something, 0.92 or something like that?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I take what my mind's going. I don't really want to raise ad valorem, except I think Fred's point, if she checks it out, is highly important to me. If there's a way that the public can clearly see on their tax bill that this is, like, for example, Lee County does a separate library ad valorem, right? If there's a way to do a separate ad valorem where they see it relates to the hurricane, then I would be open-minded about it. I don't know if I'd go for it, but I'd be open-minded about it.
Yeah.
Well, to make, are we supposed to set the trim today?
No, 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 maximum.
We could set the maximum, so if we wanted, we have to, just to protect this, we'd have to put it at 0.9 whatever, 0.92.
Yeah, as long as people properly perceive it's clearly, we're not going there, we're doing this work with respect to it. As soon as the facts get lost in a shuffle here, not here.
It has to be set by August 4. So you have to tell me so I can report to.
Oh, so we have until August to do it?
That's, that's a date that we have to, and they start calling days ahead of time when they don't hear from you.
But I thought we had to set the maximum.
That's what it would be.
Today.
It would be the maximum, it would be the maximum.
You can't go higher than that, but you can reduce it during your budget. And on August 4th, we'll say we're not going in higher than point.
Correct.
Well.
For August.
No, no, you're saying it, she's saying.
You've got to set it, and then at any time, then you're going to set it.
That was, is what is going on the trim notice.
Get your estimate.
Let all the property owners know that your projected tax bill will be this based on.
When you say set, what are we setting?
You need to approve a maximum amount that the mileage will be.
Not that it will be, but the maximum.
And that is done on August 4?
No, by.
Has to be recorded by August 4.
And how long, what time do you need to do that?
A day? I just have to go into the computer, and Arlene has to sign off.
So by August 4th, we can, so we don't have to do it today, so yes.
No, 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 by today, or Wednesday, whatever it is, you have to set a maximum rate.
No, that's not what you said.
But we have to vote on it, so it has to be at a meeting, correct?
It has to be at a meeting.
So it has to be today or Wednesday.
There are two steps to it.
Or August 1st.
First, you set a maximum rate.
Yeah, you have to say on August 4th?
Today or Wednesday, today or Wednesday.
So, so.
Today or Wednesday.
Or the following.
That was the question.
I think you said about August.
Or we could, we could place it on August 1st.
The maximum could be in August?
That's what I'm, has to be reported by August.
The maximum.
The maximum.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we could place an agenda item for the August 1 city council meeting.
Figure out if Fred's suggestion is possible, right?
Right.
You don't have to, you don't have to set it now.
That's good.
And then, but let's, or else we'll use one of these other things. Is that the consensus of the council?
Mine is, yeah.
Or maybe some combination of it. But are we agreeable that we have a benchmark figure of, let's pick one?
Five.
Five, he wants five, I said three, anybody have any other?
Yeah, but I don't want to go up by five right now, just.
What do we think?
Audrey?
The only thing my concern is, again, communication service tax is time-sensitive, so I'd rather you not wait to August 1. At least let me set up a, if I can get directions to start a shell ordinance.
I would do that.
Sheriff, yes.
I would do that, I would do that.
Anybody opposed to that?
No.
Okay, great, thanks.
But I would just, I'm sorry, Audrey. Go ahead.
For both?
Both.
I'd say for both.
Right. But I just want to, Arlene and Laura, you know, underscore this, we need clear communication on this. People are, you know, what the whole is, I mean, I'm not saying you're not doing this, but I mean, this is, this is.
We've got two news outlets here.
This is painful.
But just right now, and just for example, within our own internal discussion of discussions, we have to set a maximum, doesn't mean we're going to, we're going to go down. We've got to keep that in mind as this gets reported. Not that, but I'm saying the whole process.
And then we're saying we're going to try to fill a hole of some between three and five million, which we haven't decided. And then the second step is we can say at what pace we're going to, we're not going to do it in one year without that. And we have to say, do we want to do it in two years, three years, four years, or five years?
I would, I would say three years. But I don't want to go over a certain amount I have in my head, but that's not for today, I don't think.
Well, if we're already, if we're setting a three-year thing, just for the communication tax alone, that's going to be one point, that's going to be 3.3 million at the end of three years, just with the communications alone. Or not communications, those two.
Yeah, 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 we could do that, or it could be the other. But I think Fred's on to an interesting thing to explore.
The only, and I think it's a good idea, but I don't think we can put in there, and Audrey, you may be able to tell, we can't tie the hands of a future council that says that you will lower the ad valorem, can you?
Not, no, you can't put it in the ordinance, but you could, you know.
Not in the ordinance, I meant in for tax reason. If we raise this to one point, let's say Fred's pie in the sky, 1.2 mils, and put a little asterisk in there that says, we will lower this after we've received FEMA money, or after we've received this, or if this is for the hurricane, and it will be lowered at a later date.
I can put a sunset, but even with the sunset, if a new council decides.
No, I'm talking about the ad valorem.
Ad valorem.
We're talking ad valorem.
Ad valorem, I'm sorry.
It's the same deal on these service taxes.
Same thing on any tax.
Right.
Yeah, but those are done by ordinance.
All it takes is a future council to say.
We don't want that.
We don't want sunset extended.
Well, we want to raise, well, we want to raise it or lower it.
No.
But you can change it every year.
I guess my specific question on Fred is, can we have a line item like Lee County has for the library? That would have, people would understand that.
And how would it, how it would work, too? Like, if you have a special line item. Does Lee County still have on the, they used to have on the tax bill, the library as a separate.
Yes, it is separate. And they used to have 2020 before they glommed into that, the general fund.
2020, second library in 2020. You can do it, you set up a special, you can do it legally. What you would do is you would set up a special district that would report to you, you would be comprised of the special district.
Oh, which is the city.
Right, it's a dependent district. So if you want me to set, set up, not an independent district, but a dependent district. And we can set up a dependent district, and you could have that as a subcategory with dedicated mileage. Now, a dedicated, a dependent district mileage would have to fall under your statutory cap, but that's 10 mils, and if you guys were ever close to it, I would be shocked. I mean, I'm sorry.
We would shoot ourselves.
Right, there'd be other issues before that. But, but it could get to implications if you had special assessments and they were dependent districts set up, and that caused you restraint, because maybe some area, it was an eight, eight-point mileage in a low area, then that could create a problem eventually down the road. Lee County suffered that.
Audrey, if you set up this special district, then would you have to budget for, you'd have every day?
You would set it up as a, you would have your regular meeting, and you would basically retire from your regular meeting, hold the meeting for your district, do your voting, then go back to your regular meeting.
But, but you would set it up so that it would have to be individually budgeted, or for?
Right, that way you'd have a line item for that particular district.
Audrey?
You could meet and say, let's just off the district, something like that.
The only thing I wanted to ask is, when they had the 2020 done, with, it was a 0.5 mil rate, before they took it, took it into their general fund in 2011, it used to appear on the tax bill as 0.5, and it said 2020 money. It wasn't a special district. So maybe there's a little more elbow room than we, that's not for today, but maybe.
Right, my understanding of what happened was they treated it as if it was dedicated. They had a referendum language, and they weren't following through the referendum exactly.
Right, right, but my point is, we can't solve this today, this is what you're going to go look at.
I'll be happy to give you additional information on this.
There may be more flexibility there.
But it's not that difficult to set one of them.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, we did have, we provided you at the last meeting, and then again, at this meeting, the capital improvement project plan. If you have any comments or questions or additional.
Well, I had stuff on a capital budget, you want to go to that?
That would be next.
So, I'm going to find my notes. I think, so Logan is here somewhere. Where is it? It's everywhere.
The rows are numbered, so it's.
Oh, the new sheet, okay, so Logan.
The drainage is.
The drainage is.
I'm trying to get the whole Logan in one place. Paige, what should I turn to?
Well, the stormwater, they're sorted by strategic priorities.
Well, let me try it this way, if it's not in one place, I have Logan has 2.9 plus 1.7 plus 2.3. Does that ring a bell somewhere? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's 6.9 million. And I had funding sources of, and this comes, I just don't have the page that I took it off of, I'm sorry. I had funding of impact fee credits of 1.8. Oh, thank you. Yeah, this is where I got it. It was the July 9 budget workshop, the last page here, I got mine, thank you. Oops, so, there it is. Do you have that, Anne?
Well, that's changed.
At that worksheet, the, I mean, at that workshop, it was determined that we could do impact fee credits of 2,450,000.
Well, all right, well, hang on for a second. The basic numbers are the same there, right? Two million, the cost numbers, it's 2,950, plus 1,700, plus 2,300? Just want to make sure we're working from the same numbers here. That's what was on your July 9. Says Logan.
This was by project. So you've got to add the road with the stormwater. Thank you.
That was fittingly out in the rain. It's part of, stormwater.
The projects stay the same. 13 and 14 is the, is the drainage program through the local mitigation.
So what does this say, 2, 2,300?
Well, that's 2,350.
Oh, you added those two.
Yes, yes.
So that's what it is, you add those two together and it's like.
So that's that, 2,350. And then where is it elsewhere here?
On rows 51 and 52, 2,950.
Okay, that's consistent with what you handed out, and we're missing 1,719.
And that's one here, because that's landscaping. So that's on rows 116, 117, and 118, which also includes a developer, might not be, I don't think it's in that number, for the developer contribution.
All right, so, all right, but these are consistent with what you handed out, and they're consistent with what city council approved a month or two ago?
Yes.
Okay, so there's nothing, you're not going to ask them to re-approve that, that's right, so, but I have a question, which is, the developer funding, or maybe Matt, or, this is Matt, yeah. I thought this has developer funding of 194,000. I just had a general sense that the developer requirement for that project was a heck of a lot more than that.
Yeah, I did, too. Be built in the original.
Yeah, it was going to be an original road there. Yeah, it was gonna be an original road there. How could it have been 194?
Matt, Beany Public Works Director speaking. That 194 is not really the developer. That is Village Walk, community associations.
Oh.
Money for landscaping along there.
Nice. So was it developer money?
No, well, no, not really. It came from their developer. John could probably explain that a little better. It's for landscaping.
Gotcha. But I'm looking for the funding source, which is, the premise coming into Logan was that, just what Fred just said, that the developer was required to build a road. Or is this all on top of that?
Correct.
Yes.
So he's not showing it here because the project is actually gonna cost more than 6,900,000?
Yes.
Correct. And the numbers where that on top of would be, would be in your line items, 51 and 52.
All right. Hang on a minute.
It's not shown, but that's where, if you showed the developer's contribution.
Oh, all right. That solves that question. Okay, so, now what were you saying about the impact fee? I guess we should look at whatever, go to your big sheets here. Impact fee credits?
Yes.
2.4.
Yes, and that's on line 50, row 52.
That's the 2.4.
So 2.9 with everything.
Right.
So that's 2.4 part of 2.950. Gotcha.
And that gets backed up down at the bottom on row 127, since it's not a cash requirement of it.
So when you do the projections, like for next year, the year after, on the impact fees, you back out that number? You do?
Jackie, Jackie.
Jackie does, yeah, okay.
She considers a use of credits.
Gotcha. All right. So then the only other thing I've got on that big item, which we all believe, is if we don't get the, whatchamacallit, the, yeah, FSA, whatever's properly labeled.
HMP grant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which is 75% of 2350, all right? Which I'm sure you have down here somewhere.
Correct, created 25% naturally.
Right, right.
Yes.
Where are, that's another, that would be another cash, another strain on this.
Right.
Just adds to the original discussion.
Well, and it, and maybe it's a debt, it's a short-term debt.
Well, why couldn't we take it, and no one wants to hear this, but it's for another road. We've got four, four-something left in Quadrant Study, or in the Quadrant.
Well, part of the reason is that, if you turn the page, she's got it here now. If you turn to page one of this big thing, Greg.
Yeah, right.
Line 24.
Yeah.
The 11,500,000, which by the way, should be moved forward, all right, in time, that we worked our backsides off, including you and.
Right.
All right. To get for half a year is based on, if, you know, Matt has the sheets I talked to him about the other day, we're showing a Benita number in there.
Right.
Of, do you remember offhand, Matt? 10 million and change?
10.6.
10.6. So, you know, it's not like people are gonna be coming in and, you know, but, you know, that's the leverage that got us.
Well, I understand that.
The 11,500. So I don't think we can just, now, cash flow wise, you may be right.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
Right.
I'd rather use that than pay 3% interest.
Oh, I agree with that. I agree with that. I'm 100%. But we have to, but it just shows you the strain we're under.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, but instead of going out and having Ann go to Bank of America and get a loan, let's do that.
Then the only other stuff I had was on the capital projects. Why is downtown redevelopment for 100,000 in here? On top of 320? That's, where does that say in? So I haven't seen these sheets till today, so I don't know where the lines are. There it is.
Matt, keep that for us.
Page 76, 77. I mean, number 76, 77. Is this Matt, not Ann? Matt?
The reason we put 100,000 request for that item is, the underground electric conversion, working with FPNL, has, they have put some demands on us with modifications to the design that are directly related in cost. And so, that is to cover those costs. We've already done some of the work, where we've had to remove and relocate electrical boxes in preparation. They're basically waiting on a boring permit to come under the river, and then they will come in and do their component. But they have generated expense through tweaking of their portion of the design, where we had to do the work to change the design.
All right. So it's necessary?
Unfortunately, yes.
Right. Then I just had, I had no other questions. I just had, on the capital improvement budget, these other things to put out into years 24, 2024, which we can do. We talked about that, right?
Correct.
So, in the five-year, you gotta show a specific funding source.
A reasonable.
Reasonable anticipation of the money. But after that, you can properly put down what your aspirations are, the things you'd love to have, and be able to shoot at them. And you may get there, you may not. So I had a series of things, including via Coconut Road Extension, that's to go from, take 041 up, it's another parallel road, which would take traffic off of 41, to put that in the future.
Is that a proposal?
Well, it used to be. It's my proposal, but I mean, it's been talked about. That's why I'm raising it. That's why I'm raising it.
Yeah, went through production circle.
To production circle, right. I just want to have, you know, and if you're not prepared to talk about it today, we can talk about it at some other meeting. But I just want to start getting long-term stuff lined up here, so, and agreeing or disagreeing as to what our long-term plans are. As opposed to what we've done functionally, which is, we haven't said it to ourselves, said, we don't have any money, so we're not gonna put it on there. And so, you know, I'm going toward, where there's a will, there's a way. And if there's not a way, we don't get it done.
On that particular, I'd just like to get a clarification, but I think that, as I understand, the reason why that was removed was because there was objections from communities that it affected. I don't think that's changed.
I hadn't heard. I may be correct. I just.
Where does it go through?
Matt, do you have any? I know Estero wants it, and I know.
Go through the back of production circle and come out right there behind.
There's a roadway that hooks into it right now.
Aren't there residential areas that is supposed to?
The only one that would be.
I can only give you real conjecture, based on one conversation I had with the county project manager. From what I understand, I was not here at the time. I don't know that Arlene was even here when Via Coconut was explored. But it was explored as a larger project, running further north from the section that's already built.
Just Sandy Lane, is that correct?
North of Sandy.
Yes, but even, I'm talking up into the village of Estero. It went much further north and tied into, I believe, Estero Parkway. And so what Councilwoman Caramba is referencing, I do believe occurred.
Oh, up there.
Is that there was some objection in that, that last kind of stretch, that you wouldn't necessarily conceptualize, that maybe slowed or amended or derailed the project.
I thought it would have more to do with our communities, not that. Where does it go through? I mean, I can't.
Goes through a.
Goes through production circle.
Production circle.
From Silver, from Silver Estates in regard to that.
No.
That's what I recollect.
Nothing to do with them.
I recollect.
The only objection I heard was that from the Gothel Baptist, because it's gonna be awful close to them. Hey, look, I'm not saying we make a decision today. I'm just saying we should put our minds to.
Keep it on the table.
Right. Or not. But let's.
I'd like to know actually the proposed route before we put it on any table. That's my.
Yeah, there is a proposal.
There was some conceptual work. I don't know that it ever came to conclusion because of these types of objections. I know it was also time with the downturn in the economy.
Right.
And so I believe a lot of factors led to its kind of shelving. But I don't know that any of those.
Pauline, do you know if it was ever in our, you were here. Was it ever in our budget? Or was it, I remember, I remember a meeting where Ben and such, they took it out. That's what I remember. Or they took, or they decided not to do it. Maybe it wasn't in. I know Estero wanted to do it.
I'm trying to recall if it was actually in the capital improvements, but I know that there was discussion. I do recall discussion, and I recall that there was some objected to the north. I'm trying to remember if there was objection around.
It's fine, but I don't want to put anything in there that I don't want to know anything about.
So maybe what we could do is bring back some more information about what the.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for.
Concept of what he's suggesting makes a whole lot of sense, you know, to me, to try to get more north-south routes. But let's see where it's going, or where it may be going.
And then my next one is on the bike, let me just go through this quickly. On the bike master plan, I think we should have, once again, in the out-years, Matt and whoever's working with Matt on that, put them, you know, figure out what should be put in the out-years. By the out-years, I'm talking about 2024.
24 to 28.
Right. Sun Trail, I would put in the out-year, $10 million, but it's not our money. All right?
So we did look at the capital improvements project of Estero, and they have unfunded in the, they actually list revenue source as unfunded for some of the items they have in out-years that aren't.
Right. Well, what I'm anxious to have, to not have happen is, I'm trying to distinguish two things. Proper long-term planning versus, I don't want people thinking, which is not the case, that we're gonna spend $10 million on a bike trail when we have people flooding around here. That's not, this is just proper long-term planning. So, if you can do it like Estero did it, in the longer term. And, that's it. Oh, then I also had, maybe not for today, where's our outreach to Lee County on things like shells on Beach Road, like, they haven't given us any money on the Quadrant Plan, like beach parking and Lee Tran. But I'll leave that to others who have, you know, whatever they have. We can talk about that some other time. That's my two cents.
I think we should also have to out-year at least the possibility, and it would be big money, but it would have to be grants and other things that we get. But some kind of a system of going into here, and we've got some, for lack of a better word, seriously blighted areas. Some of them are visible from Beach Road, some are visible from not too far from old downtown. Where we come up with some system where we would buy up the land, rid of the blight, and then some of it could go into affordable housing sites because we're getting no agglor in front of now, so it would be kind of a net gain of zero. I think that's one thing we ought to be looking at. I think another thing we should investigate, we got two ways we could get it done, but maybe we could put in grants, because it's easier to get the grant funded to buy them than it is to get the operating, to get some kind of little shuttle service going out to the beach.
Yep.
And then maybe eventually, another shuttle service might even go as far up as the mall and Coconut Road.
Do you mean the kind of stuff that Lee County pays for up north of us?
Yeah. What we would, what we would do would be, we would get the shuttles through Grant, and we would then, I would put Lee Tran and, what's the guy that does the?
Oh, Alan.
Alan.
Yeah.
Let them compete to which one wants to operate it. Because they tend to operate the smaller stuff. And I think that's the only way we're ever gonna get some kind of system in here that works in advantage. And you can get grants for that because it is taking traffic off the roads. You can even use an impact piece. There's all kinds of things that you can go and get that kind of money. And it's easier to get the equipment money than it is operating. But if we did it right, I think that'd be a good thing.
Right. I think that's a good idea, but I think that the whole beach access issue is, has to be dealt with more comprehensively, because in order to have these shuttles that are effective, they have to have someplace to park, you know?
And that's it. The idea is you're picking people in town that want to go to the beach, therefore you're reducing load on beach access parking?
No, but you picture it, is it running like Lee Tran does, where they stop at any stop?
I'm talking about maybe every 15-minute service. You gotta have something better than ever.
But they stop at any bus stop along.
Well, whatever the details are, I think it's a good idea to throw it in.
Yeah.
Details that have to be worked out.
Right.
I'm just saying, these are things I think are.
Yeah, I would do that.
Being at least kicked around in the out-year.
I had another one.
Throw in is that suggestion that was aspirational from DPC, is that work, the parking area down at the beach, you know, where it does have an intern, and to integrate that with more parking and better facilities down there. I think that would help a lot, just by having a more effective parking system, rather than the one we have now, where nobody even knows where the parking spaces are.
And they had more spots as a result.
They had more spots, and it puts.
It was safer.
It puts the people where the facilities are, because it doesn't help you to park, you know, two miles from the place, and you go out through the little things and there's no place to use the facility. So who's gonna use the beach there, you know? You want to put people either at Lover's Key or down by Benita Beach where we have the facilities. So I think that that would be a good project, that's sort of a capital improvement. And takes a lot of coordination with Collier County. And in the same, and I think what they suggested, that they have, I think they said it was autonomous vehicles, but it would be these, you could also have these shuttle services, would drop people right off down there where the parking is. But again, I think you have to figure out where you're gonna pick these people up. I can't imagine that that would be effective, stopping at every stop along the way. You need to have a centralized collection system for people to drop off their cars and then get a shuttle to their.
Parking rights is what you're thinking about.
And I think that Carl did explore this with some of the things of people along Benita Beach Road, like the Presbyterian Church or the St. Leo's Church, where you will have these parking lots that are not operating during the week.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know? And I don't, I'd like to see follow-up to that kind of thinking. But it's a comprehensive look. You can't just do one thing.
That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I am. The other thing probably you're gonna get into on this beach parking.
Yeah.
That land down there is El Primo. You're gonna pay an arm and a leg to get it. You're probably gonna have to take a lot of the land we already got. And Collier's got, they're gonna need to put parking caps on it, because you can't invent land on the beach.
There's another outside-the-box idea, not for this council so much, and who knows? But, so, this math's easy to do. Our mill rate is .81. The 2020 is .5. I mean, that's what it is. So, easy math. People at Benita Springs are sending Lee County $5 million a year for 2020. So just do that, multiply by the number of years. And it's almost like what Peter used to talk about with the library. And, you know, maybe long-term, there can be some way where the cities and, in Lee County actually get that rebated, some of it, to them. So we're able to, we have all kinds of needs to buy land. We just talked about that. There's a big piece of land on the beach that's for sale, that's basically underwater, that's 100 acres for a price. You know, there's stuff all over where it's right up the alley of the general concept of 2020. But, you know.
Take matters into our own hands.
Well, it's the taxpayers' money.
Right.
And, you know, is there some way to leave Lee County appropriately, with the unincorporated part of Lee, to deal with that, and to deal with appropriate amounts of money for whatever maintenance obligations they have, but start getting this money spent in places like Cape Coral, where they're talking about they're trying to preserve a golf course, or in Benita Springs, you know? Because I think it's, without getting into this current stuff that's going on, I mean, the reality is that this was .5 that was in, this I was talking to Audrey about, right? That .5 that was separately broken out, and then in the recession, it was absorbed into the general fund, for good reason. It was the recession. But as it turns out now, it's basically because it's in the general fund, as opposed to what the original kind of mechanics of it, it ends up being a tax increase in the general fund.
And then it was fun, it was earmarked fund, and it's hard to trace through the budget when it's absorbed into the general.
Right, right. So I'm just thinking, without, and I'm trying to get into a whole Lee County thing as much as, maybe there's some constructive way to put, actually get that money to work for what 80% of the people in Lee County said they wanted to do. And that may be, work together with our good friends in Lee County, and put some of the hands, money into the hands of some of the municipalities.
Peter, what land is for sale on the beaches underwater?
It's the one where they wanted to put the fire station and, not, I'm sorry, not they.
Where it was considered.
I shouldn't say the fire.
From Benita Bay's part.
Yeah. There was discussion about the fire sta, it's across from Benita Bay. It's 100 acres. And by the way, I'm not suggesting we go buy this, but this is something where if we had a funding source like that, we sure would be looking at it. It's 100 acres for sale for, I saw it on Realtor.com, for $900,000. There's a reason why 100 acres on the beach is.
It's a little free island, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Have to go look at it.
Yeah, on the bay side, and then kind of all the way into Benita Bay.
Yeah, yeah. 100 acres. So, it's environmentally sensitive land. And Peter and I were in the middle of a whole fight to have that preserved, and we succeeded a few years ago. Sorry about that. What I'm getting at is, we're sending $5 million a year. They clearly have needs for that money in terms of maintenance to Lee County. But wouldn't it be great to put it to work?
But I think for the city, it'd be good to identify potential.
Well, there you go. More.
And we can have a list of, you know, and now we have the Benita Fairways or whatever it's called.
Right, correct.
And then we have some DRGR land, and we have these other things that we might want to put our wish list together on that basis.
And there may be other important parts in old Benita around town.
The thing that you're talking about, you know, some of it, you know, we could get some different kinds. We don't necessarily need to have 2020 land, but maybe some of this disaster money coming into it.
Well, that's another thing.
There's a potential for some of the CDBG disaster recovery.
So I think, we should get like a wish list of that. I think that's really important, because we can put things in perspective for what those numbers are.
Yep.
And just, this sun trail here, did you mention that? Because it doesn't seem to be very.
10 million.
In the out-years.
In the out-years.
There is?
No, it's not there now. I'm suggesting it.
Oh, it's not there? That's my question. Yes, I agree with that.
But she doesn't have to show a funding source. She's just gonna show it 2024. It's not, it's not our money. It's gonna be other people's money. Well, it could be taxpayers' money, but not Benita taxpayers' money. Right. Or maybe.
And does staff have any long-term things that they picture being here that we have? Have any aspirational ideas?
I think, well, for example, one of the things that I'll be talking about on Wednesday is we like to do some preliminary engineering work designed to look at our hardest-hit communities during the storm. And that will be helpful, not only in the stormwater utility process that we go through, but it would help us identify some projects for grants. So it might shake loose some specifics in the Imperial Dean, and then we want to continue that as well, to identify those projects. And those should probably be put on a long-term list, and whether we can acquire grant funds for them, or stormwater utility projects, or in essence, if it's an emergency situation, what we look for as far as funding in the future.
So the Imperial Dean, I went with Matt and Arlene the other day. I just wanted to. I was one I've been interested in from the beginning, which is on the west side where that water seeped across Dean Street and basically flooded these poor people like it just filled up like a bowl, you know? And, you know, there's a very small outtake on Beach Road that goes across, goes into the big pipe that comes back around by Oak Creek. But I think, you know, Arlington's right on the ball here in terms of the possible CDB money through FEMA. Something like that could be a perfect project, perhaps. And others as well.
I just would like to talk about the city hall improvements. I know we've sort of delayed doing some things, but I'm in favor of doing something in regard to the air handling.
Oh, because you sit over there.
It's really, well, it's both from a comfort point of view, which makes it impossible to sit under there, but you can't hear anything because of the air intake over there. So we either have to do some kind of a barrier, an auditory, audio barrier there so that you can hear. And I'm somewhat persuasive about these microphones, so maybe that would solve the problem. And I hate to spend money when we're so strapped in so many ways, but I think in the long run, it would be useful to try to get a handle on that because it's not functioning, you know? And I don't think it's just me.
Right.
We do have the air conditioning included in the next two years. There's two parts for air conditioning, the Aon units, which if you feel it's humid in here right now, we have two Aon units for the building. One is down right now. I got a proposal last week about replacing it. I have to get them to split it apart because we really need to do that now because it's down. The second is, we have four compressors that is looked at for the following year. We do not have anything in there right now for the noise barriers or anything associated with that.
Do you wanna do musical chairs and share the pain?
Yeah, I'll sit over there.
Either that or give me a microphone because I, it's not because, if I'm here, I can hear perfectly well, but it's like this blowing sound that's just like constant and you just cannot hear, even if people are talking.
I'll switch and see how it is, if you want. That's fine.
From that intake valve, because we have, definitely I was looking at it the other day.
Let us have the contractor take a look at what the issues are, if there's any kind of improvement we can do. We can bring that back.
But I'm afraid it would obstruct the air there.
If you restrict the return air, then you're gonna get less outlet.
Exactly, well, that's what I'm saying.
I think one thing that might be helpful, that would be real terribly expensive, and that would be have them take these diffusers and put smaller ones in to double the number that are over that area so that you get less air coming out of one spot to spread it out better.
I will tell you that obviously we didn't purchase, or we didn't build this building. There are some challenges with the ductwork in the building, but it will take a significant cost to change the ductwork in the building. One thing, our air conditioning company already has said, all of ours will go from this side of the building. And for us to balance what Councilman Forbes is saying is we need to put a unit over on this side, but we have nowhere to put a unit on this side. So there are some complications with air conditioning that were here when the building was built that we do have some challenges with, that we're gonna have those unless we wanna put a significant amount of money in that part of it.
And that brings up my final questions. Do we have anywhere in our aspirational things whether we would move out of this building into something else?
Look to you guys in Arlington for that.
You know, I mean, if we're gonna be talking about this kind of stuff, I think that you have a deterior, you could have a deteriorating situation here. I don't know if that's reasonable. I'm not in favor of putting twenty million dollars into a city hall, but we have some constraints that I think is only gonna be more difficult as we go forward.
Worth thinking about.
Well, let us talk with that.
Or maybe we could say, no, we can fix it up, you know? And that's the direction we're going to, but I think we should ask the question.
Question, if we were to build another building that was big enough to accommodate building inspection, for example, community development, can we collect from those operations rent? Get into some of that, like building inspection, we got this big fund. We charge from rent for being in a new building.
The costs associated with running the building department, those are approvable costs. So you'd have to dissect that out of what the cost was.
Oh, it's all in there now, you're saying?
We're actually paying somewhere over where they're at, so.
Right, there's a...
We'd be shifting that revenue over to help pay the debtors, that's my thought. And I'm not trying to advocate that we book a new building.
Right.
There's some attorney general opinions on the point, I can work with staff on that.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
So if we're concluded with the capital improvements, there was some items that we have a handout on that were considerations that were afforded from council. And then we just wanna provide an update on...
I'm sorry, Ali, could you put the landscaping stuff in here? Did that go in?
Urban.
Like 041 and that should go in too, I mean, in the long term.
In the long term, you're talking about.
It was the Beach Road out by Fred, all that, you know, I would put...
In the long, yeah.
How about, you got 041, but we requested somebody...
So, well, one of the things we discussed at that last meeting is we would look overall where aesthetics should be looked at in landscaping. And we didn't break that one out as an individual project yet, but we were gonna look at some out years that were overall aesthetics as well.
And some of them might not really be out years in the near term, okay.
We also still need to bring back some recommendations from DPZ for your consideration, and those might be items that go into the short-term, long-term, depending on where they, which includes some improvements. And also, that also included discussion of the beach parking, too, their recommendations. So Councilmember Gibson had had a suggestion that we look at the microphones. Communications does not have a dollar amount that they have yet, but that's, we wanted to get direction. If you'd like us to move in that direction, we can bring back some costs associated with that.
It's estimated about fifteen thousand.
This is for this environment?
It'd be portable microphones that just sit on the table, so for this. But we could probably also use them up there instead of having that boom right in front of us that, you know, a lot of us tend to lean back and not speaking to it. These other ones, they sit on the table, they pick up everything.
Yeah, it's like MPO.
Yeah, in Cape Coral.
Well, and also the county MPO.
Right.
Yeah, I came across them at the TDC, so the county had just bought them like two years ago. And they switched over from a previous one to that, and it was just amazing that it just sat there. You could be talking any direction, it picked it up and very clear.
Typically, they have one mic on the table between...
Yeah, between two people.
It's got a little button on where you punch it when you wanna be on.
Mute it.
And that was fifteen thousand is what they...
Yeah, Jose estimates about fifteen thousand. But especially with doing the closed captioning, like these aren't picking up our speech very well. The closed captioning may not be working, so. And I know, I've been told many times that when we're up there speaking, some of us, you know, have the microphone down or away so it's not right in front of us all the time and we forget to pull it back and people have a hard time hearing on the TV and streaming.
We probably need to make sure we get one of those up at the speaking stand because I know sometimes when, depending on who the speaker is making presentations, as soon as they glance a little bit to look at the slide, you can't hear them or it's kind of muffled or garbled.
And these are wireless, so they can be moved anywhere in any situation that we're doing.
Well, if we can use it for, then someone calls in to, you know, rather than putting it, can we put it next to the...
Well, yeah, it wouldn't have to be like, I know sometimes with typing over there and the phone's right there, we could have the phone somewhere else with one of these microphones and it would pick it up. So it doesn't have to be right.
That would definitely be an asset because it's Chinese torture when we call.
Oh, being on remote, my God.
So that's why people both mute when they call in because...
So if the general consensus is to include...
Tick, tick, yeah, absolutely. Debbie. Oh, Audrey's doing it too.
Quiet timer, yeah, right.
If the general consensus is to include that, I'll ask communications to get us some quotes and we'll include that in the budget as well.
Yeah.
The other items were correspondence that were received by the mayor. One is regarding the welcome, the welcome sign at Big San Carlos Bridge.
Yeah, I mean, just passing along a message, just passing along an email that I received.
What is that, what is he saying? Beat up?
Yeah, saying the sign's beat up. To this point, too, when I was at an event, most of us were there last Thursday night at Shangri-La, the gentleman from NCH mentioned that NCH would be willing to put a new sign on 41 for Benita Springs, right where it is there. Rather than just the green industrial sign, I guess, is what that is or the standard sign. If we wanted to do something, NCH should be willing to talk with us about doing that. Because it makes, look, if it's good for us, it's good for them, right? You see the sign, you see the hospital?
Mayor, I think, I was in one of those early meetings with Pelican Landing and stuff with NCH, and I think there is an agreement for them to do that. And it was somewhat delayed because we're in the process of redoing all our signs. We're trying to get our signs to be cohesive. And there was a question of what it was supposed to look like. There was also somewhat of a question of where it exactly should be. You could tell that it's right close to Pelican Landing, there's a hub entrance there. So I think that's why that hasn't been done and we've been waiting. Don't we have, do you see in your supply...
Well, one of the things we talked about is having a consistent message.
Right.
So we were looking at this...
So, and that's kind of my feeling about this one, too. I have two issues here. I totally agree that it should not look like this. But we're also gonna have plans for a new bridge. So I wanna make sure where that bridge, if we ever decide. And I think we're supposed to have some kind of a presentation on that, where it's gonna fall here. And I don't know where the sign is in relation to what the concept is there. And then do we wanna have this kind of sign here because on the beach? And is this in keeping with, or do we wanna have like a total? It's easy to paint, I mean, the easiest thing is just paint this up.
To paint it.
Like they did on Everglades Corner Garden. Or maybe we want something else, so. But I think we need to do something, I think that's a good suggestion, and we just have to figure it out.
We'd also have to go through the permitting with FDOT as well for...
Oh, this is FDOT?
This would be, the one on the bridge would be... Forty-one, on the one on forty-one with NCH requires approval of FDOT as well.
So there's a little work that has to be done there, but I think, do we wanna have it?
I thought you said when you came in, you weren't gonna bother with any of those rules. Just put it up, get Matt, get the hammer and put it up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, it's getting late.
I would suggest that we also have a sign on 041 South that a developer has reached out to staff about as well that they feel is also in disrepair. So I think we need a consistent branding look and so one...
As long as it's Benita Springs, it's not all kinds of other people's logos, right?
Correct, oh, this would just be the city's sign, correct.
I mean, it's kind of a cool sign, so I don't object to this one, but let's decide what we wanna do and then move, because we have like now these three signs that we might wanna have it upgraded. Let's decide what the sign is supposed to look like and then execute.
I think first we should do an inventory of all the welcome signs we have because you also have one in Imperial Parkway that's confusing with right next to Lee County sign. So maybe an inventory of all the signs and then a message. And we do have some of the funds in the urban design line item that maybe we could utilize with DPZ since they're working on our branding and kind of provide some recommendation on that.
That's great.
And the other, there was a letter received by the mayor from Good Wheels.
Oh, it's Alan.
Requesting ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's the same thing. I told Alan myself, I mean, on my own personal view, Fred and I see him all the time at the MPO. I'd love to do this, but we have many, many charities around here that we don't help. It's, so, you know, one guy asked for it, but I don't... Until we figure out if we're gonna have a social service number, I wouldn't, with all due respect to Alan, he's a great guy or he has a great shop, I wouldn't be spending the money on it. Colonel Fred, what do you...
Oh, no, no, I agree with you. I just wanna make a comment, even though it's not on the budget, it doesn't really strain the budget. If we're gonna decorate that bridge, the floor, even come back here with the design, let DPZ look at what's being proposed.
By the way, I wanna talk about DPZ.
World-class design.
When we get through here, I wanna talk about our thing on Friday and I, but I don't wanna hold this up, but I agree with that, yeah. What it's worth.
And then the last one was a request from Councilmember Gibson to look at Wisconsin Street as well. And that's something we can include with the master plan for the bicycle pedestrian master plan unless there's an item you'd like to move up earlier.
I think that's fine. Is this not the, is this the street where the one fellow has a big issue?
The post, the former postmaster.
Yeah, yeah, Richard.
Richard.
Big Mets fan, by the way.
I thought he was on Wis...
Big Mets fan. He has a...
The former postmaster, Benita, he did not, I thought he had a lot of concern for putting the...
Postmaster, Collier.
Collier, sorry.
Well, Benita wants to.
He didn't wanna have the sidewalk, is that the one?
Correct, yeah. So I'm just, I'm all for it.
Yeah, the residents that actually live on the street, they've been asking for it for years now.
All right, I'm not disputing, I'm just pointing this out.
You know, we just had Kentucky, Carolina, because we've gotten a, what do you call it, a petition.
Right.
You know, from both sides.
Okay.
But I remember looking at the petition, the petition that wanted it, they all seemed to live on the street. The ones that were against it did not really live on that street. So that was the big takeaway I had.
Well, I would definitely...
We have Kentucky going down to it, and that ends there now.
Yeah.
The people have been asking for it, there's a lot of kids on that street.
Yeah.
But then the other, the other side of it is where it connects to Pennsylvania to be doing some kind of traffic calming on Pennsylvania. And at one time, there was talk about a roundabout where they connect or, you know, something, four-way stop.
Right.
You know, something to help slow down the traffic on Pennsylvania where they tie together.
I would think about stuff like that, whether we do it or not. I know you're saying it's tight there.
It's tight, the other thing is, I mean, I think in somewhere galaxy far, far away in the future, we're gonna put a, I mean, we're gonna put one, how it's going down Pennsylvania, you know, for the quadra study, was gonna become down in the...
No, well, no, no, it doesn't, it goes in north of Carolina, so it doesn't impact Carolina. It goes in on a T, as the current plan has it, it goes in on a T down there. Well, yeah, absolutely, traffic out, traffic in, right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so you're gonna, we're going to affect the traffic that's going there.
Right.
We may have to do a traffic calming because someone's gonna hop in off of Pennsylvania and try and run out that way instead of going down to Beach Road.
Right.
We're gonna have to slow that down because right now, people speak down at all.
And that debt a couple of years ago.
Remember that.
Would this be included in like one of our other studies?
He just said put it in long-term and have it on the list.
We can put it within the complete, oh, Mac, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but we, if you look in the gas tax funded items for traffic engineering services, we increased it, I don't know, thirty thousand dollars. And part of that was because I had looked at a proposal for looking at a feasibility of a roundabout, you know, the early stage at this intersection of Wisconsin. And we had to quote back about twenty-five thousand dollars from a firm that specializes in roundabouts. So there are some dollars in there for traffic engineering. If you wanted, you know, us to look into that, and that's kind of was the intent, is to provide those dollars when you start a feasibility. Now, it's not a whole project, that's just looking at a very specific intersection to do the light work on.
I just think these are all ideas. Do you have also the famous up at the north end of Paradise where it does that, it's almost like a... almost like a chicane in the road, that's very dangerous, that we've gotten requests for years to put a sidewalk in there? Connecting Paradise to Cockle Shell, I forget the name of the street, you know what I'm talking about.
We don't have-
Maddox, thanks.
You know, those dollars, what I just mentioned is, it is in a different place.
Right.
We might have some availability there or through the multi-use path item that's in the CIP.
Well, I'm just kidding, wherever, Wisconsin and that should be there, and maybe other ones as well.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion, you know, the way the CIP is structured right now, is those, both those sidewalk construction projects would fall, designing construction would fall within your multi-use path.
Right.
You know, because you would look at what best fits, and that would be the line item that I think you would use.
Are there any other sidewalks beside Wisconsin and Maddox that have been talked about a lot, that people are?
We have two shelf plans for some small projects, they're $100,000 plus, but we do have final designs on an extension of sidewalk from the fire station on West Terry Street to, I don't know the name of the stoplight that crosses over to Publix, provides you connectivity to a bus shelter, it also provides a crosswalk for folks that are using that area.
Well, shouldn't that somehow be tied into Alta? Or no? Maybe, maybe not, okay.
It's just west to where they're stopped.
And then there's also a standing request that is designed for, in the Paradise area, that southern end of Cockle Shell, that would tie a sidewalk connection into Shangri-La Road.
Oh.
So that's, that is designed, and it's, I think it's estimated about $100,000, or it might be a little bit more.
Well, it would just be good to have all these things on our radar here somewhere, whether we can afford them now or not is not the issue, get them, I'm not saying they're not on your radar.
But they're on my radar.
Right, but I mean-
My take would be they'd be in the multi-use path line item in the CIP.
Are prior advice at all in your mind?
Only in my mind.
You don't want to tell anybody, because it'll cause conflict?
No, these ideas are laid out in your bicycle pedestrian master plan.
Okay.
There are a couple that have shelf plans, those are the two I just mentioned, the other ideas are there, it's just a form, you know, funding and probably a prioritization as how you want to move forward with them.
And what about speed tables, you know, those?
They're contemplated in the West Terry Street project that Alta's designing.
Oh, really?
And then, as I mentioned, the increase in the money for traffic engineering, kind of the intention was to look at, you know, maybe a roundabout project in the city as well as, you know, some corridor for speed tables, so it would provide you some design on a spot basis.
Okay.
So what I'm talking about are two different things here, one is you have about $60,000 for traffic engineering where you could say, I want to look at a roundabout right here, or I want to look at a speed table right here, where you could get somebody to do that for you. And then it's constructability in these larger projects, which would be out in your CIP process, as well as funding of those, the construction of those would be in a CIP.
Thank you.
I think that's all of us. And then, just a little, I had mentioned it earlier, but we did provide you with an assessment of the vehicle asset list on the back.
Right.
And the idea is that we did in this budget plan for $100,000 for vehicle replacement and repairs, with the idea that we'd bring back a resolution, so whatever we don't spend in this fiscal year would roll into next fiscal year, replacing by $100,000, and looking at, so that we can at least eliminate all of the poor condition vehicles for the next few years.
And see, this is also a strain that we don't see, and it's not totally transparent, the point Greg's made, like at the fire district where they planned for, you know, that's in their, I assume, is what he said, that's in their budget, and, yeah, and it's not in our, and this is one example, but even more strain on the unassigned general funds that we don't have, you know?
That's somebody wishful.
Yeah.
And then, we just wanted to give you an update for next, what we're planning for this year and what could happen in next fiscal year. Right now, in the, in this proposed budget, we increased the repair and maintenance of the cameras by an additional $5,000. That is to cover the cost, I guess one of the larger cameras you see is about 450 per camera, so this is, those are 2005, the larger cameras are about 2005, the smaller cameras are approximately 2011, they were purchased, the smaller globes. Overall, in next fiscal year, we're looking at a potential of looking at a replacement for that, and we, through the year, we'll give you more information of that, but we wanted to prepare you that there are some in planning, in planning that we need to be looking for.
Is there any way to get, because these are basically, you know, all we need is a 7-Eleven and, you know, a height thing, I mean, that's what base, these are basically the same cameras, right? So, is there any way to get a better quality without spending a fortune? Have we looked into that?
Currently, we did do some research to see what other cities are using. We're still on analog, which is a little bit outdated at this point.
It's more the angle, it's kind of like-
And most of the counties and cities have transitioned in the recent years to HD cameras, which is a higher resolution, which gives better quality. The cameras that you see here were installed about eight years ago, and those are surveillance grade cameras.
Surveillance.
Just like here, yes.
Yeah.
And those were added at the time, because council gave direction, they wanted to have direct shots for each person with a limited budget. The other cameras you see are, were put in in 2005, and those are a better camera, that's the ones that we use mostly when we're doing these, but since they're old, we are starting to see they need to have a replacement.
And Jose advised, there are about a five to 10-year lifespan on those, so we've been making them work.
And then new tech, we, well, we use cameras that are community in a different way, but it's amazing how different the technology is for the cameras that we're using for, you know, security, and their, the cost is drastic, so it's worth it to explore alternative systems in my view.
So that's what I'd like to bring forward, is some alternatives to see what direction, and then some comparison costs, but we'll be preparing for that in this fiscal year to have the cost into next fiscal year.
Excellent.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, fantastic. I just wanted two quick things. We were over there at DPZ and on Friday, and I would recommend that somehow we organize it, every city council person and everybody else who wants to, they're just a font of constructive knowledge. I mean, what it reminded me most of way back when I went to the sterile design review meetings, and the developers were in there, and it happened to be on a gas station, I was there one day, many years ago, and they're all, like Fred, I mean, they're qualified architects, they're landscape architects and such, they're giving construct, they're full of constructive advice, it's not, this is what you got to do, this is what, you know, it's constructive advice, and I just was so impressed, and I just, however Eileen can arrange it, to make sure that everybody's, you know, however you do it, you know, I think would be great. It's what Fred said, I mean, the top of the league.
No, but they're willing to have anyone come and visit their facilities there, it was more cost effective for us to bring our team there on Friday, but we also can set up a Skype call, which we did with Councilmember Forbes the day before that, so.
I went over, because it's an initiative that I've got, I've been pushing to try to, you know, on the 041, to get something done quickly and get something constructive, obviously, depends on council, but-
We do have requests from two different developers for individual meetings via Skype with them as well that we're working on coordinating for them.
Then the other thing is, and I know Pete, you've been, I'm sure, talking to Mike and Carmine and such, and I'm going to be meeting with Mike tomorrow, just consistent with everything that council has said, but particularly thanking him because, you know, the quotes that he gave me and what I wrote and stuff like that, so, just, he's been fabulous through this whole SRO thing.
The only other large scale project I wanted to mention was, is Matt and Ally have been working very hard on the build grant, and we'll have some outline information for you at the council meeting, but we are looking to have it submitted, hopefully, the deadline is Thursday, but hopefully be submitted by Wednesday is our goal, and we want to thank the mayor and the deputy mayor for outreach to all of our legislative and elected officials. We've gotten a great response and letters of support from them. This is the build, which was formerly the Tiger Grants, and this is for the Terry Street project. We'll be able to give you some brief information on Wednesday, and we're going to be providing you all with a copy of the actual grant, but it's approximately an $18 million project, but we've identified the existing funds that the council has budgeted in the CIP as our match for the project.
Fantastic.
Counsel, what else? Fred? Mike? Lawrence? No?
No, just confirming that we're going to impose like a trim on-
When?
First, on first-
We could put that on each end of the-
Set the maximum trim.
And also-
The actual one would get down to September.
Right.
And then Audrey working on the shell ordinances for the two other revenues.
August 1st, reading August 1st, second reading.
Amy?
Thank you for answering all my questions.
Great job, guys.
We got a meeting on Wednesday, we've got a few more things now. Fred, did you have something here?
No, just public comment.
Oh, yeah, okay, no, absolutely, if there's members of the public that would like to speak. Seeing none?
Technically not.
Technically not the public?
You can speak.
Yeah, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, no, I, a couple, you know, questions I want to add.
Okay.
That'd be for you.
Is that for me, you're looking at me?
Yes, for you.
Are you? Okay, all right, just checking. We got a lot of great mouthpieces up here, much better than me. Anything else, anybody? Okay, I guess motion to adjourn?
We'll move right-
We are adjourned, thanks, everybody.